This business meeting of the Board of Education of the Cleveland Municipal School District will come to order. Mr. Stockdale, please call the roll.
Ms. Ellicott.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Mr. Briggs.
Here.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
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 Thank you, Mr. Stockdale. I ask everyone who wishes to rise and participate in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, good evening and welcome. As we begin, I'd like to share a few remarks to kick us off. As our board and our community have been discussing and commenting on the pending recommendation for consolidating a number of our public schools, I would like to take a moment to talk about the role of the Board of Education, not just in this process, but in the governance of our school district and where this current work sits within the context of the last few years. Ohio state law provides that the management and control of the Cleveland Metropolitan School District rests with the Board of Education. Over the last two years and change, about since I became Chair, in fact, the Board has undertaken a great deal of work in transforming its approach to its governance responsibilities to ensure that we fulfill those responsibilities in managing the district. Last year, with the community's input, the Board created district goals and guardrails for the first time in the district's history to ensure that our district delivers to our students the education that they deserve and that we monitor our progress towards that goal in a transparent and effective way. Earlier this year, we shifted our meeting structure so that we spend less time reading out resolution titles and more time actually monitoring whether our district is succeeding in its primary business: educating the children of Cleveland. This structure functions to hold our CEO accountable as well to transparently monitoring in public meetings his progress toward the goals and guardrails that we have set, an approach that he has wholeheartedly embraced rather than picking information about what we want to share to the public on a given day. At times, that has meant the Board and district having to face some unfortunate realities about how we are not delivering for our students. At the same time, it has given us the opportunity to set up the work to do better. We cannot change what we do not face. In order to achieve our goals that we set for the district, it was clear to the Board that our building footprint would need to change if we were to deliver the math, literacy, and post-secondary outcomes that we are aiming for over the next several years. For that reason, in January of this year, the Board directed Dr. Morgan to embark on a long-term facilities plan planning process that included significant community engagement. The initial result of that process was the Building Brighter Futures recommendation that the CEO presented to the Board and the community two weeks ago. Now, it's up to the Board of Education to exercise its statutory role as the governing board of our school district and to review, discuss, and listen to additional community input on the proposed recommendations before making the final decision on consolidation of our footprint. With regard to input, as many of you know, we have doubled the number of public comment slots during our meetings. I challenge anyone to find a public body in this city that's willing to adapt its standard operating procedures in that way in order to allow for more community input. With regard to input, I do want to say we're looking to make changes with as much care and thought as we possibly can. However, input is not going to mean everybody gets to choose what they do and do not want. At the end of the day, this Board is going to have to decide and indeed carry the burden of deciding what is best for the entire district and for the benefit of every student. Thank you to each of you who is here, whether you're giving comment or not, for being a part of the meeting today. Next, we will have public participation. During this segment of the business meeting, we will hear all public comment on either agenda or non-agenda items other than the school calendar. This public participation period will be for persons who previously submitted the online request-to-speak form to address the Board for up to three minutes each. As you know, there will be up to 20 speakers called up today, and this is an increase from our usual number of 13 speakers. Again, as usual, we will limit each speaker to three minutes. We ask that you respect this time limit, and the timer will be available on both sides on the screens here, and there will be a beep when the time is up. As always, I'm going to start with students because I know you might have to get home to do your homework. So, Logan Gornacki. Ladea A. Harris. Maybe they're doing that homework. Alright, Councilwoman Charlie Slaife. Stephanie Wornett. Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Stephanie Wornett. I'm the Chief Innovation and Technology Officer for the City of Cleveland, and I'm here to speak in support of the Building Brighter Futures Initiative. I am certain that this Board is well aware of the $150 million deficit facing CMSD, even with the much-needed passage of last year's school levy. The root cause of this deficit is quite simply Cleveland's population loss. Back in 2000, CMSD served 70,000 students across 127 schools. Now, however, CMSD has only 35,000 scholars spread across 90 buildings. So while CMSD has, over the past quarter century, made the difficult decision of closing schools, it has to date only closed 30% of its buildings in response to losing 50% of its scholars. This means unfortunately, we still have scholars sitting in semi-empty buildings, buildings which cost as much to heat, to clean, and to maintain as if they were full of scholars. And so, the CMSD Board is again facing the unpleasant prospect of closing schools. But we all knew this day was coming. Before I worked for the City of Cleveland, I spent nearly a decade at breakthrough schools. U-CMSD sponsored most of our schools, and we had a great working relationship with you. We used to talk about the decision, the decision that CMSD would eventually have to make, and we waited for an administration that would have the foresight and the courage to make the decision for the long-term financial health and academic success of the school district. I'm grateful that the administration has arrived and is here now. And so, in closing, I and the Mayor's Office support CMSD's journey on the path towards building brighter futures. We know you're still finalizing your plans, working with your teachers, working with your scholars' families, working with your communities, but we are confident that collectively, you all will make the right decisions to address the elephant in the room and to mix metaphors to stop kicking the can down the road. Thank you for taking bold steps, for removing funding from old semi-empty buildings and redirecting money towards scholars and teachers, towards algebra, computers, band in sports, towards professional development, IEP support, and safety programs for the benefit of all of our scholars. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Brandy Baggerman.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm a little nervous, sorry. My name is Brandy Baggerman, and I am the parent of first grader Ryan from Luisa Mae Alcott Elementary School. I'm here tonight because this school has made a life-changing difference for my child and so many others, and it deserves to remain open. When my family moved here from Texas in the middle of last year's school year, we worried about how Ryan would adjust. From the very first day, the teachers, the staff, and students welcomed us with a level of warmth and care that makes us feel right at home immediately and comfortable with our decision to attend a public school in an unfamiliar city. That kind of warmth cannot be measured in enrollment numbers. Because Alcott is a smaller K-5 school, teachers truly get to know their students. Within just weeks of arriving, Ryan's teachers identified areas where he needed extra support, needs that his previous, much larger school never recognized. With the focused attention he receives at Alcott, that personal investment is shaping his confidence, his new love of learning, and his future. That is the power of a smaller community school, and it is exactly why a K-5 environment like ours must be protected. I see this impact every time I volunteer. The classrooms are joyful and engaging, the building is well-maintained, and the teachers and staff are deeply invested in every child's success. We may not rely heavily on certain support programs for our family, but we absolutely value them for our community. Programs like our Care Closet help families who need extra support and strengthen the sense of community that defines our school. I also want to briefly mention our students who receive special education services. Families are being told that these students may not be able to move with the rest of our building to the merge school, and there may not be space. Your decisions should be based on transparent, accurate information to fully understand the impact on most of our vulnerable students. They deserve to remain with the teachers, peers, and routines that serve them best. Every child at Alcott deserves a guarantee, not just a promise of that stability. So for families like mine, Alcott is not just a school, it's a safe nurturing place close to home where children can grow and flourish. Closing it would disrupt not only Ryan's progress, but the strong foundations being built for so many children whose journeys are just beginning and children that I see every time I volunteer. I ask you to look beyond numbers and truly see the lives being shaped at Alcott. Please keep our school open. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next, Jonathan Salazar. Jonathan Salazar.
Hello, Board, CMSD. I just want to say thank you for giving me this time. I want to start off by saying something that I haven't heard or just a handful of times during all these meetings, and I've been to a lot of meetings, which is SPED, Special Education, Special Needs, 504s, which is super personal to me. Four years ago, I moved over to the land from New York, and my priority was to find the right school for my boys that can give me the help I need to lead them down the right path of progression. Thank God I landed with CMSD, which I'm forever grateful to, and Luisa Mae Alcott. You know, I didn't do this by myself. You talk about a perfect storm. CMSD created a perfect storm in Luisa Mae Alcott with the special people that they put in there that took care of my boys. Special people, special leaders, like Ms. Greer, Ms. Moore, Ms. Pows, Mr. Chappelle, Ms. Hollowell Martin, Ms. Smith, special teachers like Ms. Schuman, Ms. Adler, Mr. Jay, Ms. Head, Ms. Maldonado, and God willing, they'll make it to Mr. Reese. You know, when my boys went to the school four years ago, Gobby, my son, he was non-verbal. Now, he can sit back and have a small conversation with you back and forth. It took that team to do that for me, and I'm forever grateful. CMSD did that for me. My son Xavier, he started off in a self-contained class. With their help, with CMSD's help, Luisa Mae Alcott, I was able to transition him to Gen Ed, and now he's flourishing. It changed my life. It changed my life. It changed my boys' life. Parents know that there needs to be a plan. There needs to be a change, and that's for sure. But the plan needs to get tweaked to give parents smaller school options so there's not all big schools. For my sons, for a lot of parents, their kids excel in smaller schools. So we need to have those options like Luisa Mae Alcott so that it works. It works. You want to keep what works? I'm living it. My boys are living proof that it works. My boys are living proof that it works there, so we should keep it. It provides the excellence and inclusion, for sped and our core factors. Board, if any of you have kids, CMSD, you got kids, especially with special needs, you feel where I'm coming from.
Thank you, Mr. Salazar.
Good evening, Madam President, to the Board, to the CEO. My name is Zach Reed. Coming to you tonight, and I'm not speaking to you as a former city councilperson, and I'm not speaking to you as a member of the Mayor's Cabinet. I'm speaking to you as a former student in the greatest high school in the history of high schools, John F. Kennedy High School on the southeast side of the City of Cleveland. I graduated in 1979 from John F. Kennedy, and I decided to go 3,000 miles away to go to school in San Francisco, California. When I got to California, I didn't have a college, because I was supposed to go to one college, and I decided not to. So I was looking through the newspaper one day, and I saw a college, and I decided that I would go to that college, because I wanted to take political science. And I went down to the school, and I took the test, and I passed the test. And my family and friends wondered how I passed that test, because it was the third-accredited private college in all of California. The two schools in front of it were Stanford and USC. If I told you my school, you'd probably never heard of it, Golden Gate University. I was able to pass that class, that test, because I was prepared. I took algebra. I took geometry. I took chemistry. I took Latin, thinking I was going to be a lawyer one day. So when I went 3,000 miles away, I was prepared. Dr. Morgan, when you played that video at the state of the schools, and that one young lady from John Adams, our rival, said that, "Why couldn't we take classes like that?" And it's a shame that the students in this Cleveland Metropolitan School District are not receiving the best education that he received, because the day if they got on a plane and went 3,000 miles away, and they had to take that test, and they didn't take algebra, and they didn't take chemistry, and they didn't take Latin, they couldn't have done it. Every student in this school district deserves to have the same education, no matter what side of the city they live on. So that's why I support BBF, because as I got a great education, every student deserves a fantastic education, and I believe that this recommendation and this plan will give every student the same opportunity that I received, and I believe that's what you should vote on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Good evening, Board Education, the City of Cleveland, CTU Executive Board. My name is Lakeisha Tugle. I'm the Assistant Chapter Chair for the CMSD LPNs. I am here to respectfully request your support in implementing a team nursing model across CMSD schools for the '26-'27 academic year. This initiative is designed to strengthen student health services through a collaborative, efficient, and comprehensive approach. With the proposed mergers, there will be many schools that will serve 500 students or more. Our community is already affected by violence, poverty, lack of preventative healthcare, and underinsured families. Our students depend on nursing services for chronic day-to-day, excuse me, they depend on nursing services for chronic and day-to-day services. We serve children in the areas of tube feeding, ostomy care, diabetes type 1 and type 2, medication administration, new diagnosis education, allergies, seizures, asthma, mental health support, and mandatory reporting with strict deadlines. Immunizations, vision, and pre-K data all have to be sent off to the state. Our current school health services face challenges such as high student-to-nurse ratios, increasing complexity of health needs, and limited resources in some cases. These factors impact student safety and their daily health, academic performance, and staff workload. A team-based model offers a sustainable solution, and it also takes care of its substitute issues that we currently have. So the proposed model, structured teams composed of registered nurses and licensed practical nurses. The roles would include, RNs would be leading the care plans, verifying and inputting orders, talking to those community health providers, IEP and ETR concerns, and oversight. LPNs would manage routine tasks, schedule community events, and support the acute care. Workflow, this model encourages clear delegation and communication protocols to ensure continuity and safety. The key benefits: improved quality of care for acute and non-acute needs, enhanced efficiency and resource utilization, better communication and continuity of care, increased student health outcomes and satisfaction amongst all stakeholders, professional growth and increased morale for nursing staff. The expected outcome: we want to reduce health-related absenteeism. We would get faster response times for our emergencies, higher satisfaction from students, families, and staff, and we want to increase preventative care with community service such as dental, vision, and our vitals clinics. Your approval and support is essential for this model, and it ensures the health and well-being of our scholars. The model also addresses the sub and absence concerns on its own, which in turn offers continuity of care. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. These are my fellow LPNs, and we just want to stay and do what we've been doing for the last couple of years with Cleveland's kids.
Thank you, Ms. Tugle, and thank you all.
Good evening.
Evening.
So my name is Shakori Davis, President of Next Generation Construction, local Clevelander, born and raised here in the City of Cleveland. CMSD grad, graduated from East Tech High School. My wife graduated from CMSD as well. Met her 32 years ago when I pulled her in my seat on the bus. Both of my, two of my children, CMSD grads. They both attended John Hay, which is a school that's architecture, sorry, science and medicine at early college, which is going to be merged, and of course, they're sad about that process. But I'm here in support of the Building Brighter Future Plan for multiple reasons. I am also, I do a lot of volunteering. I sit on the Board of Say Yes, sit on the Board of Cleveland Builds, I sit on the Board of GCP. In each one of these committees, I have the privilege to work with a lot of CMSD students. I'm also an employer. I employ over 100 individuals, and I'm very intentional with my hiring of CMSD students. And I have to say, if it wasn't for my intentionality and I measured them against kids from other areas, I'm not so sure that we would be in the best position. As we all know, society is changing, and we don't, we here do not create the market and the standard for hiring and for children to be prepared for different workforces. And I'm very supportive in the plan that you all are putting forth. We have to make the hard decisions, and I commend you for, since you've been here, you've, I wouldn't say a bearer of bad news, more so a bearer of the decisions, the hard choices, and hard choices are not easy to make. So I commend you. These choices did not just arise when you got here. So I just wanted to say, we support you, and I look forward to hearing the action plan in place for the business community to work with you and partner with you, so that this Building Brighter Future Plan can be successful. So, thank you.
Good afternoon, or evening now. I'm Jessica. This is Miles. He is my youngest of four children. We have lived in the West Park neighborhood for my whole life, so I was raised in West Park. I went to St. Joseph Academy. I have two older children that attended private school and graduated from St. Joseph Academy as well, and Lutheran West High School. It was a hard decision, and Miles is my first child that I have chosen to go to attend Cleveland Municipal School District. I decided to enroll him in Valley View Boys Leadership Academy, where he is, this is now his fifth year there. He has been there since preschool, and he is now in third grade. We chose that school. It is a small school, but every time I drove past that school, principal at the time, Dr. Terrence Mitchell, would be outside, helping the kids cross the street. Every morning, staff would be there, giving every child a fist bump, knowing every child's name. It's very hard on us to hear that although it's reported to be a merger with Kenneth Clement on the east side of Cleveland, to us, it is a closure. It is a different building. It is a different name, and it is in a completely different community. Having Miles thinking of the decision to put him on a bus for probably 45 minutes to an hour every day, it's just not an option for us. He has thrived in a smaller school setting. He is used to that smaller school setting, and unfortunately, I know Cleveland has done such great things with Miles. He's also on an IEP. He's had an IEP identified since preschool. He has been in speech, and it's, we have stuck with Cleveland. Valley View was known for the extended school day, the extended school year, aftercare. All of those things have stopped for us. We have navigated having grandparents pick up with a school on the east side of Cleveland that is not an option for my parents, who are 77 years old, to go and pick him up. If there's an emergency, there is nobody able to pick him up over an hour away. I work in Lorain County for Lorain County Children's Services, and although I want to stick with Valley View or Cleveland, I just want to know, like, how special it has been to be able to attend a school in our community where he can walk to school if needed. He's right there, and it has been a pleasure working with Cleveland so far, and it's very heartbreaking to know another school in our community will be closing. Miles just wanted to say one thing. Every morning, they say, pledge, if he could say this really quick, I can say it with him. Every morning, they say this before the start of the school day. "We are the young men of Valley View Boys Leadership Academy. We are exceptional, not because we say it, just because we work hard at it. We will always be responsible, respectful, and resilient. We will always be each other's brothers. No excuses, never fail, never give up. Heads up, mind is brilliant. Chest out, love is in our hearts. Valley View Boys Club."
Cleveland Teachers Union President, Sherry Oberinsky. Good evening, President Oberinsky.
Good evening, Chair Alakad. Good evening, Board members. Dr. Morgan, earlier this year, I stood here with teachers, paraprofessionals, related service providers, and parents as the Board contemplated the elimination of the extended day, extended year, and year-round calendars. Board members heard from all of these stakeholders and then implemented a one-size-fits-all plan across the district in the name of fiscal responsibility and equity, despite everything you heard from the community. Today, I stand here with these same stakeholders, as the Board considers closing 29 school buildings and impacting more than 30 others with consolidation and building moves. That plan, the plan that was presented by Dr. Morgan on November 5th, made many promises, moving students to better buildings, increasing the course options for students, and much more. And I don't think that anyone can or should argue with these goals. They're what we want for kids, better than what they have right now and more of what they deserve. The CEO also presented a compelling case for reducing the district's footprint, a shrinking enrollment, and schools that are too small to offer what they deserve. It's hard to disagree with that logic, but here's where the agreement ends. The CEO described the vigorous attempts at community involvement in the process to develop the plan, the many meetings throughout the process to gather feedback. Yes, meetings were held. Yes, feedback was gathered, but it's simply disingenuous to say that stakeholders have had meaningful input into the actual plan. Asking people what their aspirations are for their children's education is conversation, not input nor feedback. Feedback and input involve actually cluing the community in on your plans and having them tell you what they think, gathering their questions and answering their concerns. It's only now, over a year into this process, that we are anywhere near that part. To gather this feedback and input, the Board has committed three hours of public comment over the next four weeks before making decisions that will completely alter the landscape of education in Cleveland. Proposed changes that have, to this point, failed to take into account the lived experience of Clevelanders, their thoughts and opinions. Over the next four weeks, the Board has a duty to this community to not only listen and learn from the feedback and input that you're now getting after more than a year of planning, but a responsibility to get out your red pen, not your rubber stamp, and make the changes necessary to create what our kids need and deserve. Over the next four weeks, you need to examine closely why, for example, Mooney's moving to Dennison and not the other way around, or why neither is consolidating with Ben Franklin, or why the John Hay campus is being condensed when it would seem there's no actual existing plan for how that will be accomplished, or why Hannah Gibbons is moving to Memorial as opposed to O.H. Perry, which is physically closer to Hannah Gibbons, particularly when we have a limited capacity for transportation. This is only a sample of the concerns that I've heard, but my three minutes are almost up. On December 9th, you will all make decisions that will impact the children of Cleveland far beyond your tenure on the Board. I know that all of you here are in service of CMSD students in our community. Part of that service is listening not only to district administration, but to all of our stakeholders, then using that knowledge to make the changes that need to be made. It is only when you do that, that you can prove to the people of Cleveland that you are really building brighter futures.
Thank you, President Oberinsky.
Good evening. I do want to start by saying appreciation for President Sherry Oberinsky's comments. My name is Dr. Shanice Johnson-Thomas, and I'm here on behalf of Cleveland Public Library's CEO, Felton Thomas Jr. Good evening, Madam President, CEO Morgan, and CMSD Board. I am here to share that Cleveland Public Library supports the recommendation made by CEO Dr. Warren Morgan, and I'd like to provide how CPL will provide support in the following areas. Number one, prioritizing student support. Cleveland Public Library values its enduring collaboration with CMSD while remaining steadfast in its mission to support scholars and families. To help families make informed decisions about high school placement, we are partnering with CMSD to host the December School Choice Fair. Number two, community-based communication. Every CPL campus will serve as a trusted partner and point of connection for CMSD families, helping to provide accurate information on school assignments and creating safe spaces for questions and dialogue. Number two. Number three. ... Number three, transition resources. CPL will work alongside CMSD and community partners to develop programs and tools that support scholars in completing the school year and preparing them for the next, with an emphasis on continuity in learning. Number four, equitable access for all students. CPL will work with the district to ensure that every student has access to the resources needed to thrive during and beyond this transition. And finally, it is important to note that Cleveland Public Library remains committed to ensuring that all Cleveland's young scholars and their families have safe and convenient access to our campuses regardless of where they go to school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Next, CCAS President Quentin Davis.
Good evening. Good evening to the school board, to Dr. Morgan and his team, to our CMSD family, to the Cleveland community, and most importantly, the reason I'm standing here tonight as the president of our Cleveland Council of Administrator and Supervisors, also known as CCAS. I want to begin with a story. I am currently enrolled in CSU's doctoral program. Every semester, the university releases the dean list, students who have earned a GPA of 3.5 or higher. Recently, a friend of mine asked why I hadn't mentioned making the dean's list. I paused. I responded, "I didn't tell you because I've been telling you all along about my grades, the assignments, my test scores, my dissertation feedback, etc." I assumed that if the process was tight, clear, and communicated consistently, then you already knew the dean's list was a guarantee. It was a promise. In my mind, the process was clear, but in reality, the people around me still had questions. And that meant the process wasn't as tight or transparent as I believed for them to believe I met the promise. Now, what does this have to do with BBF? We all understand the promise of BBF, a strong, equitable, and robust learning environment where every kid, regardless of their zip code, has access to opportunity. The promise is not the issue. The process is where the question lies. And when the process is unclear, when stakeholders don't understand the sequence, the rationale, or their role, uncertainty grows, doubt grows, trauma from past CMSD experiences resurface, and the very people who must uphold this work every day begin to wonder where they fit in. If the process is honest, transparent, seamless, and inclusive, then there is no room for confusion or mistrust. A tight process leads to a tight outcome. A clear process leads to a clear promise. Administrators are essential to the BBF promise. For many of us, the district is not a job. It is woven into the fabric of our daily lives. We have committed our careers and some of us, our families, and personal sacrifices to ensure CMSD students thrive. Administrators are the bridge between the district's vision and school execution. We are the ones who translate plans into action, who support teachers, who support families, who respond to families, and who ensure instruction does not stop even in challenging times. Because of that, we desire fully to be included in the full BBF process, especially when it comes to decisions about admin placement, staff changing, building level adjustments, and structures that impact our daily work. We are not asking for control. We are asking for a true seat at the table. Our request is simple. I'll wait till that stops. Got like 20 seconds.
Once it stops, you can finish up.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Allow us, as CCAS school leaders and administrators, to collaborate with the board and with the district leadership in shaping the processes of BBF, not to debate the vision, not to disrupt the work, but to contribute purposefully to design of systems that would determine whether the promise is fulfilled. We do not have time or interest in being combative. This would delay the access to the promise our students truly deserve. We want to be an unwavering collaborator. We want to ensure that decisions being made about us, our schools, our teachers, and our students are informed by those who are closest to the work daily. BBF is a promise worth fighting for. BBF is a promise worth fighting for. But promises are only realized when the process is strong. Let us be a part of strengthening that process for our schools, for our teachers, for our administrators, and above all, for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, President Davis. Katie Kelly. Katie Kelly.
Thank you, CEO Morgan, Chair Ellicott, and members of the school board for your thoughtful leadership in stewarding the Building Brighter Futures Plan. We recognize how much care and courage it takes to guide the district through decisions of this magnitude. Preefer Clee supports the district's recognition that consolidating school buildings is necessary to ensure that Cleveland students from preschool through post-secondary have the opportunities, programs, and resources they deserve. These are difficult decisions, but they are rooted in a commitment to equity, efficiency, and excellence, and we are grateful that you're moving our community towards those goals. As the Executive Director of Preefer Clee, I am honored that our initiative has been part of the Cleveland Plan since its earliest days. Together with CMSD, the City of Cleveland, and our many community partners, we have worked to expand access to high-quality preschool across our city. We are deeply grateful that the Building Brighter Futures Plan continues to affirm the district's commitment to strong, accessible preschool options as the foundation for student success, and we look forward to partnering with you to support that transition. When we reflect on what the district has been able to accomplish with its preschool program over the past 10 years, the progress is extraordinary. In 2014, CMSD offered approximately 800 preschool seats. Last year, the district served 2,200 general and special education preschool students across the city, all in classrooms that have earned the highest rating by the state of Ohio. Data show that children who experience one or more years in these preschool classrooms outperform their peers by 20 percentage points on the kindergarten readiness assessment and go on to demonstrate significantly higher rates of third-grade literacy, something that I know that is very important to the board and the district. We also see that CMSD's preschool program is a powerful driver of enrollment. Over the past decade, more than 70% of families who enroll in the district's preschool program go on to enroll in kindergarten. The district's commitment to continuing to offer preschool in nearly every elementary building is especially important now. We are seeing consistent year-over-year increases in the number of young children requiring special education services, and state and federal policy shifts and funding uncertainties threaten other sources of high-quality preschool across Cleveland. As you finalize planning with school communities across the district, we urge you to preserve as much capacity for preschool as possible. We are also encouraged that the district is expanding its use of state resources, including the Early Childhood Education Grant and publicly funded childcare, to strengthen the preschool program. These funds significantly enhance CMSD's ability to sustain high-quality preschool in every neighborhood and will help offset the district's costs and contribute to sustainability. With five seconds left, Preefer Clee is here to be a partner in whatever way we can to support the district's plan, including helping families find high-quality preschool options next year.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Next, SEIU Vice President Shahera Sheer.
Good evening, CEO Morgan.
You can adjust the mic if you need.
I'm sorry, I'm short. Good evening, CEO Morgan, Board Chair Ellicott, CMSD Board members, staff, families, and community members. My name is Shahera Sheer, and I serve as the Member Vice President and Lead Delegate for SEIU District 1199's CMSD Chapter. I am here today representing more than 600 dedicated employees across the ESS, food nutrition, non-school support, and school secretary classifications. This is the team that greets families each morning, serves meals to our scholars, maintains clean and welcoming school environments, and ensures essential daily operations run smoothly throughout our district. We appreciate the CEO's recent meeting with our leadership team and the commitment to engage meaningfully with our membership in the weeks ahead. As you consider recommendations for Building Brighter Futures, we urge you to recognize that some schools may see their enrollment double. This reality requires a serious commitment to prioritizing adequate support staffing levels for the 2026-2027 school year. As the board reviews the recommendations presented in this plan, it is imperative to ensure sufficient secretarial coverage, fully-staffed kitchens, and robust environmental support services. These roles are foundational to smooth operations and central to scholar success. We stand ready to collaborate with district leadership to ensure that every scholar, regardless of school or neighborhood, has the resources, stability, and support necessary to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Sheer. Next, Ali Zay Heiskel. Ali Zay Heiskel. Donell Chappell.
Good evening. Greetings, Chair President Ellicott, Dr. Morgan, and the rest of the board. Thank you for hearing me today. Number one, I have a, today I'd like to have an invite, an advocacy, and a recommendation. The invite is I'd like to invite you to Louisa May Elcott, Black History Month Program, through the lens, this is inspired by Through the Lens of Allen E. Cole, The History of African-Americans in Cleveland, Ohio, by Samuel Black and Regina Williams. It's going to be sometime in February. I'll send you out reminders, so book that in your calendar. Number two, I'd like to advocate for a creation of an academic contemporary to the Senate, such as having the academic side, like we have sports, Academic Bowl, Academic Decathlon, and we compare that to the pre-K through eights, so we can have spelling bees and math competitions, and then they can unite and boost each other and boost some of that stigma. A powerful thing a young man said at one of the town halls is, "Our high schools are not gangs. They are not. There are anchor institutions to build future leaders of tomorrow." And I advocate for that. It's in the Let's Talk app, so I'm not going to spend too much time on that. Something I often get in trouble saying to my friends is, "I'm not against favoritism. I'm against being no one's favorite." The Building Brighter Futures did not cut our way at Louisa May Elcott, and I could almost stomach it until we got to special education. We moved together at Louisa May Elcott. If we're told we're all merging, we all merge. And it's here that maybe our special education may be with us, maybe not. We don't move like that. Our special education kids have never heard nothing like that. They take up space in our building. They take up space in our gyms. They take up space in our hallways. They take up space in our playground. We'll shut the playground down for three days for a kid to have their goal of reaching the top of the playground, and they will cheer. That's Louisa May Elcott. I have a recommendation that we have a Building Brighter Futures meeting specifically for special education before this vote. You have done a wonderful and incredible job of hearing the hard questions and hearing the hard statements. You have built the guardrails. You have built the core values. Let your hard work work and hear off the community of special education. And if you have a problem, we'll help you. We know it's hard to configure the continuity between K-2 M.D. Autism, 3-5 IAS, and all of that. We have seen a special dedication to the specialized schools, but we want to see special dedication to special education. And just lastly, we're going to end it off and round it out with advocacy of Louisa May Elcott. Might as well shoot my shot while I am here. We understand that you have plot points and data points and all of that, but what would it take for to keep Louisa May Elcott open? This magical place, the place that don't mothball it and lose the magic. If the guardrails are the wall and the core values are the line, then let Louisa May Elcott be the trampoline for special education, for integration, so that those who go into the future are not lost, but we can propel them into the future.
Thank you, Mr. Chappell. Ryan Evanson Heine. Ryan Evanson Heine. Ramona Brazil.
Good evening. My name is Ramona Brazil. I'm Executive Director of Government and Community Relations at the MetroHealth System and a proud graduate of Cleveland Metropolitan School District. I'm here tonight on behalf of our President and CEO, Dr. Christine Alexander-Rager, to confirm and reaffirm MetroHealth's strong support for CMSD. More than a decade ago, Dr. Alexander launched MetroHealth's School Health Program at Mount STEM Elementary in a converted classroom. Since then, through the Integrated Health Initiative, we've expanded care with mobile clinics serving more than a dozen CMSD schools and opened five in-school clinics at Mau, Clay Westrop, Glenville, Anton Gardena, and my alma mater, John Marshall. These clinics offer students a wide range of care, annual and sports physicals, treatments for illness and injury, chronic disease management, mental and behavioral health, teen services, and dental care. By meeting students where they are, right in their schools, we've seen real results: higher immunization rates, more consistent physicals, fewer absences, and stronger academic performances. We encourage families and staff to take advantage of these onsite clinics, and parents and guardians can fill out consent forms so students can be seen through the day. Our partnership, however, extends beyond health. In Lincoln West High School, the first high school in the nation located at a hospital campus, students gain experiences, mentorship, and scholarships. They explore not only medicine and nursing, which is my background, but they also the many professions that keep a health system running, from IT and supply chain to legal services. But we also recognize that change is difficult, change is painful, and as we look at Lincoln West consolidating back to one school, we recognize that our program may look different. But just as MetroHealth has faced significant financial pressures while meeting high community needs, we stand with CMSD, and we reaffirm our commitment to continue and reimagine an even deeper partnership. I'm intrigued by the team nursing. How can we help? How can we help in leveraging our relationship? So together, we will keep working with the schools to provide care, opportunity, and pathways into healthcare careers, helping Cleveland scholars thrive today and lead tomorrow, just as someone did for me. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go through those who I called earlier, just in case anybody has arrived. I do want to allow the opportunity. Logan Gurnacki. Ladea Davis. Laqueta Worley. Ryan Evanson Heine. That concludes our public participation period. This evening's consent agenda includes the minutes of the last board meeting and one Board of Education resolution, two finance resolutions, four excellence and culture resolutions, and three legal resolutions. The Chair will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of Agenda Items 4.02 through 8.03 as set forth in the board meeting agenda. Thank you. Mr. Stockdale, please call the roll on this motion.
Ms. Ellicott?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Briggs?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Pastor Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebron?
Yes.
Mrs. Peak?
Yes.
Dr. Shridhar?
Yes.
Mrs. Welchow?
Yes.
The motion passed with nine votes.
Thank you. The motion passes, and the minutes are approved, and the 10 resolutions are adopted. Next, we have one academic resolution, 9.01, authorizing the issuance of a purchase order to Panorama Education, Inc. to purchase the Teaching and Learning Survey Platform, which consists of digital licenses and materials, declaring that these items may only be acquired through Panorama Education, Inc. as a sole source provider in an amount not to exceed $105,875 that the board will be voting on separately from our consent agenda. $105,875 that the Board will be voting on separately from our consent agenda. That is because pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 3311.75 and 3313.46, with the adoption of this resolution, the Board must determine and declare by a two-thirds vote of all its members that the supplies and services purchased from Panorama Education, Inc. are available and can be acquired only from a single source. The Chair will now entertain a motion to approve Resolution 9.01, again, the full title of which is set forth in the board meeting agenda. Thank you, Dr. Shridar.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Stockdale, please call the role on this motion.
Ms. Ellicott?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Briggs?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Pastor Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebron?
Yes.
Mrs. Peak?
Yes.
Dr. Shridar?
Yes.
Mrs. Welchow?
Yes.
The motion passes with nine votes.
Thank you. The motion having passed by at least a two-thirds vote, the resolution is adopted. All right. At this time, the Board will take the opportunity to continue the discussion of the Building Brighter Futures recommendation that our CEO presented to us at our November 5th Board Work Session. Do Board members have any further questions from last time that have come up before we get into the presentation? All right. Dr. Morgan, over to you.
Thank you, Chair Ellicott, and thank you, Board members, for your questions. So some of the questions that you shared during our November 5th meeting, I have those answers for today. And then also, as the questions we've been getting even tonight, they're so helpful. It's always really helpful to hear the feedback and also thinking about...I heard a lot about process, not necessarily just the promise, but the process. And I think that's something we all agree on, that we really have to ensure should the recommendation move forward or any version of the recommendation move forward, it's going to be really important that we work together on the implementation. It's a really big plan that has a really huge promise, and I know our entire community wants it to be successful. And so some of the things I wanted to share tonight are just some of the questions that came up last week. I wanted to bring those responses back to you, members of the Board, but then also share some responses to some of the things we've been out in the field, because we've been actually today completed all of our staff meetings that we've done in buildings. We've started doing our family meetings, and I wanted to share with the community some of the things we've been hearing bubbling up and to provide some responses to it. I know there were even more questions that were lifted tonight that we would love the opportunity to share more on. Just a reminder, these first couple of slides are what we call Repeat to Remember, just to make sure that everyone is grounded in not only our timeline, but also the recommendation. So as you're aware, two weeks ago, I shared the recommendation to the Board, and as Chair Ellicott mentioned in our November 5th meeting, the intention is for the Board to vote on December 9th, so a few weeks away. What has been taking place in the in-between time has been those staff meetings. We've been in all of the schools that have had some type of impact, whether you are transitioning school, welcoming school, or moving school, to do staff meetings. We've also started the family meetings as well, as you even heard tonight, some of the questions bubbling up from those. We've also been doing briefings with our principals and assistant principals, and also just meeting with other different staffing groups. I know there's an opportunity that we had a chance to meet with SEIU. I know soon I'll be meeting with our bus drivers over at the Bus Depot, so really getting out to listen to our different staff groups. And then there will also be an opportunity for us to hear specifically from chapter chairs of transitioning and welcoming and moving schools to receive that input as we continue to gather feedback, and that will be taking place in about a week and a half. We've also had student support led by our Human Guard Department at all of our schools. So just a reminder of the recommendation. So our recommendation, the first column on this slide is beginning with the end in mind, knowing that in this recommendation, should the recommendation go through, there will be 18 buildings that we will need to think about for reuse. There'll be 18 buildings that will be left empty, that we will need to figure out what we are doing. I know we're working with the city on that. Some of those uses, we may also use as education facilities for our district, but those are all things that we're planning to move forward and work with should this recommendation be approved by the Board. And there are five lease spaces that would end. Those five lease spaces in this recommendation would be the space we have at the Great Lake Science Center, the space we use at both Tri-C and Cleveland State University for MC Squared STEM, the space we use for Campus International High School, and our fifth lease space, oh, Stone Brook Montessori that is part of the Michael R. White Montessori, which will be moving to the Stephanie Tubbs Jones Building in this recommendation. Now, we know that buildings are not synonymous with schools, so even though there are 18 buildings that would be left vacated, there are 29 fewer schools, as you heard many of the commenters mention. So this recommendation includes 29 fewer schools, a total of 39 total mergers and moves. And we've shared some of the details of this, that these are all mergers or consolidations per our union language and not necessarily closures, really thinking about how students move and staff move. We heard some good feedback tonight about some of our specialized groups, because as it is now, there are some buildings that have space requirements for special education, pre-K, and so those are always, even now, how we have to think about the space requirements for those, but the comments are heard, and we definitely want to ensure we can continue to work and provide that information to the community. And then also just realizing the system-wide benefits of this plan. Speaking of the benefits for the plan, and you heard a little bit about this tonight and some of the comments about the promise, so I do want to make sure everyone understands the promise. So of those students in impacted schools, those students who are in a school that is transitioning or a student that will need to move schools, 100% of those students will have expanded academic opportunities, extracurricular opportunities, athletic opportunities, as well as student support. 96% of them will be attending an equal or higher-rated star school. So these are students will have a higher-performing school that they will have an option to. They will have a seat, a reserved seat at a welcoming school. And then 95% of the students will have a reserved seat at a welcoming school that is equal or better in terms of building condition. So all of this is part of the recommendation, should the Board vote on the recommendation. And also, this plan saves us an estimated $30 million a year, and when we think about that $150 million target we talked about over the next three years, this totals to at least $90 million. And I'll talk a little bit about our finance forecast per the questions that we received, both from Dr. Shridar as well as Ms. Welchow last week. We'll be sharing more of that later on. Now, those were just the impacts for the students in impacted schools, or the benefits for students in impacted schools. Building Brighter Futures, as you heard from many of the commenters tonight, has the promise for every single student within CMSD. And so the promise for the entire system is that 100% of our high schools will offer college and career opportunities and pathways starting next year. 100% of our elementary schools will offer at least one enrichment course beyond art, music, or PE, and we've talked about those enrichment courses being the ability to take Algebra I in eighth grade, offering foreign language, offering CTE pathways starting in the middle grades. All of that will take place starting next year. And we know that this plan has a promise to ensure that 100% of our students are in new or upgraded facilities. This will take us a few years as we're building some new buildings. This recommendation includes a new high school build for the Glenville-Columwood community, as well as a new high school build for Lincoln West, and a new build for Marion Seltzer, but then also there are several facilities upgrades that we will need to do in some of our other buildings to bring them up to par. With this recommendation, should the Board vote on the recommendations, the buildings that come offline also frees up resources and bond dollars for us to pay for facilities upgrades in our existing buildings. So I want to respond to questions that were raised by the Board last week or two weeks ago, as well as things we've heard out in the community. So the first one, and probably the biggest one we've been hearing, whether it's been out in community meetings we've been doing or in some of the town halls that have taken place last week, is this question about won't merging schools dilute what's really working in our schools and the academic promise that all of our schools have today? And then there's this other question about, is this plain disregarding some of the great work that's already taking place in schools around college and career readiness? And so I do want to take a moment to address some of these questions and know that as we continue to get questions really on the programmatic aspects, those are things that we'd love to bring back to the Board to share some of the things that we're working on and planning and give some more specific details on that. One, I want to remind you, this is information that is on the slide that is posted on the website, as well as on the individual slide decks that schools have. Building Brighter Futures does offer, particularly in our high schools, well, in all of our schools, but in our high school mergers, the expanded opportunities for college and career opportunities. So when we talk about that 100%, many of our schools do not offer those programs now, and with the enrollment, it offers that expansion. It offers the expansion of language electives, the ability for students to earn an honors diploma at every high school, and also the ability for many of our high schools to have Senate League sports. But we also want to preserve what's working. There's been many questions as we've been having meetings about what about the key partnerships? We have some really great partners, you know, within our system. You heard about MetroHealth that I know is supporting our Lincoln West campus and other campuses, you know, as you think about the clinics, but I know particularly the program at Lincoln West. We want to preserve that and also figure out, as we're doing the next iteration of this plan, how do we strengthen that and strengthen the model so it actually has a clear pathway with the four courses to complete a pathway? Because sometimes we're offering a program without a completed pathway. I know we've been meeting with the Foundation Board at Cleveland School of Science and Medicine, which we want to preserve those programs, and now with the opportunity that more students have access to that curriculum, what does it look like to support more students in that model? And I know that there are internships that the Cleveland Clinic offers. We want to continue those types of programs and thinking about the expansion of that with Argonaut over at Davis Aerospace and Maritime. Now that, you know, with this recommendation, should the Board vote on this, that would be a combined school at Benjamin O. Davis Jr., where both the aerospace and maritime pathway, as well as the media arts pathway, as well as the transportation pathway will all be there together. So how do our partners actually support all the students in the model and expand those partners? So we really want to continue to meet with our partners. MC Squared STEM is another one, excellent model, that now will have the opportunity for kids in the central community in this recommendation to have that option at East Tech High School. It's not about eliminating the partnership. It's about expanding it and giving opportunity to kids that have not had that opportunity. So a lot of opportunities for us to work and preserve what's working, and then also thinking about how do we protect against cuts to services? We want to ensure increased safety and security. I'll talk about safety in a moment. The nurses in our building, still having our full-time nurses. Shout out to the LPNs that were here tonight. I know you guys hear me say it enough. My mom is a school nurse, so always has a special place in my heart, but really thinking about how we preserve that and think about supporting that, and guidance counselor services in our schools, as well as special education, pre-K, all of these different things are things that we're protecting. For more specific details, I know the community has specific details about their school community. The Building Brighter Futures page is a landing page on our website where it is a repository for all Building Brighter Futures information. So if you have questions about your specific community, so you can see on the slide here, this is a screenshot of the website. I know we're in the process of doing some upgrades to the website, so it may look a little different, but on the Building Brighter Futures website, not only can you find past videos that we've done, you can see the recommendation that I delivered to this Board on November 5th. You can see the presentations we've been doing at all the different school communities that specialize for each individual school based on the recommendation. You can go on the website to see that. You can also go on the website to find frequently asked questions. So we know we've been getting lots of questions, and sometimes we may get the same question 100 times, and so for those frequently asked questions, we would ask that, you know, one, you can ask it, and we will answer it, but also you can go to the website and get that information. We'll be continuing to update it based on information that we receive as well, but this is all on the Building Brighter Futures landing page. Another question we've heard about was about the east and west side, the differences of opportunities on the east and west side, and there were many questions I've heard over the course of several weeks around, you know, aren't we decimating the east side, you know, stripping the east side away from schools? Hasn't this been a historic practice? And I just want to bring some numbers and facts to some of the things that we've looked at. So if you look at this slide here, our current reality right now, we have six...this is looking at our K-8 schools, so this data, these data points are only for our K-8 schools. We have 61 elementary schools. Right now, 34 of those elementary schools are on the east side, 27 are on the west side. And if you look at our current enrollment right now, our enrollment is slightly lower on the east side than the west side. We have more students on the west side, but less buildings. I also want to remind you that right now, we have 61 elementary schools. We took two elementary schools offline last year. Both of those were on the west side, both in Walton and both in Newton-D Baker. So those were both on the west side. We've already closed two west-side schools last year, and we still have more east-side schools. With this recommendation, should the Board move forward with this plan, there's a recommendation for a total of 45 elementary schools next year. The east side would still have one more school than the west side. And so I just really want to make sure, I know sometimes we can talk in platitudes, and there's also experience, and I heard that in the comments tonight. There's experience behind the words and people's lived experiences, but I also want to make sure we're grounded in facts and data in terms of what's taking place. The other thing I want to know, I want everyone to know, that with this plan, I know there were questions around, won't students be left in deserts? Our data, when looking at the average distance students will have to travel to get to a nearby CMSD school, it will still be under a mile, still under a mile for students to get to a nearby CMSD school. Now, we're an open-choice system. Students can choose wherever they want to go. So we have students that live on the southwest side that are traveling all the way to the northeast to go to school, like some of our patterns show that, and if that's what they choose and they can get there, they can do that. But we are an open-choice system, but if families want to choose a school that is in their neighborhood, like I, you know, I heard the compelling case tonight of the family that's at Valley View, and I know with this recommendation, they won't...the recommendation doesn't include an all-boys leadership academy on the west side, but there are other options in that neighborhood. There's Riverside, there's Clara Westrop, you know, there are other options that are in that neighborhood, not all-boys leadership academies that families could choose. And so in this time, when we're thinking about the open-choice enrollment, should the Board vote on this plan, there are transition supports for families to understand not only where they have a reserved seat, so in that case, Valley View students in this recommendation would have a reserved seat at Kenneth Clement, but also have the choice to make a choice within their neighborhood. And so just really helping families understand that. But should they choose, there still is a school within less than a mile of where they live. All right. Speaking of transportation, there were questions about transportation. I know on the day of the recommendation, I shared that our commitment is to continue to provide safe and reliable transportation to all of our scholars. A couple of things, just to add some facts behind that and what we're planning to do. Currently, CMSD, we transport students who live within one to three miles of their school, and we will continue to do that. That doesn't change with this recommendation. Also, specialty schools that offer district-wide transportation, we will also continue to do that. That's also part of this recommendation. Currently, high schoolers that live more than a mile from their school receive RTA transportation. That will continue through Building Brighter Futures with the continued support, and I know we're looking at the revamping of safe passage as supports given this recommendation. And then also, we have to provide transportation for students who have accommodations or things that are in their IEP that requires them to have specialized transportation. That is what we currently provide. We will continue to provide that. So this is just a graphic here. Now, you may be asking, why is it saying K through seven? Because the students, should this recommendation go through, and this is where the Board wants us to charge us in terms of moving forward with Building Brighter Futures, there is...K through seven students are the students who would need to make a choice. So rising kindergarten students, and then of course, well, no, actually, current kindergarten through seventh-grade students, rising kindergartners, of course, they will be new students. So these will be current kindergarten through seventh graders. These will be the first through eighth graders next school year. Of course, all current eighth graders will be our rising ninth graders, and they need to make a high school choice, and so there is a process for that. But when we talk about transportation, we provide yellow bus services to our elementary students, and then of course, high school students who have special education services. But in our elementary schools, if you attend a neighborhood school and you live less than a mile of your welcoming school, so a student is, has a reserved seat at their new welcoming school, they're at a school that their school is closing, they need to go to a welcoming school, but they live less than a mile, they're within walking distance, and they would not receive transportation. That's currently our policy. They wouldn't receive transportation there. Now, if their welcoming school is more than a mile, a mile or more currently as it is now, from their welcoming school, they would receive transportation, not only for next school year, but also for the '27-'28 school year. So that's one of the things that is not only in FAQ, it's been information we've been presenting at the individual family meetings. And then for our specialty schools, you know, those are those models, dual-language or single-gender academies, the art academies, IB Montessori, those are our specialty schools that offer the district-wide transportation. That will continue. So you heard tonight the parent from Valley View, which is a specialty school, it's a single-gender school, that in the recommendation, it's to combine Valley View with Kenneth Clement. In that case, for families that want that reserved seat at Kenneth Clement, we will provide that transportation, even provide that transportation, even though that is a distance. As well as also help families explore other options, should that be something that the, that gets voted on with the recommendation. A couple of other questions we've heard have been about class sizes. So we've heard, you know, won't merging buildings create larger class sizes? The enrollment in buildings are growing, won't that increase class size? We've also heard a lot about safety, what are we doing to ensure safety? And so I want to address a couple of these things, and those were questions that we also received from our board last week as well. So first, starting with safety, with this recommendation, we know that by taking some buildings offline and making no changes to our security staff, we'll be able to provide either level or increased security support at all of our schools. And so really thinking about how this plan will help ensure more safety and security in our buildings and really improving the allocation that are at schools, but then also really thinking about those social emotional learning resources that need to continue through our human wear department and also providing support through safe passages. These are things we're committed to. We currently already have a standing working group with the city, with Cleveland Public Library, RTA, Cleveland Police Department, our police department. I know in those meetings, we have our union president there, we have our board chair at those, at those meetings, really figuring out ways to, to work together and provide safety and security in our, in our buildings. And many of our partners, we will continue to, to work on that. The other thing I will share, and you heard someone mention this from one of the town halls, where a young scholar who graduated in 2017 said, you know, high schools are not gangs. And so even though it's really important when we think about the merging of our schools, we do think about the two communities coming together, it's really important that, one, we realize that all of our students are scholars, and we, as the adults, need to raise our expectations and the bar that we have in terms of how we, how they'll interact and behave. And that's up to us to really make sure we're providing that cultural and welcoming environment. Also, we've been an open choice system in our, in our city for some time now. So students are already choosing schools that are mixing neighborhoods. That currently is the reality. Even though we have schools that are in neighborhood, we're an open choice system. Kids can live anywhere and choose any school. And so I just want to remind everyone that because many of the people I talked to, we went to school in a different time and there may be things that people are remembering of what it once was when there were neighborhood specifics or some of the issues that were in our schools. Now, I'm not saying that there are not challenges in our buildings. I'm not saying that our students are always saints. We know that it's, it's a growing process. But we also have to remember where we currently are and think about, meet our students where they currently are, given the issues that they have. And some of the bigger issues we have are around safe passage and making sure students get to and from school, which is why this working group we have is important. Class sizes, so we, I know we've described this quite a few times, our commitment through this recommendation is to ensure that class size limits are the same in our contract. So we are not, this is not increasing those class size limits. We want to ensure that those class sizes are maintained through our contractual agreement. Of course, our agreement also shares what overages are that's already in the agreement, but we're not planning on going beyond that. And just to give a visual example, I know I've described this before, if you're looking at school A, which right now, school A is a lot of our elementary schools, really small schools, they have one teacher per grade level. So it's a single class of third graders with 21 students in the class. If in January, you get six new third graders, in the school with one teacher, all six of those kids are going to one class, the class size becomes 27. Still under, still in the contractual range, but it's 27. Versus in school B, when there's two teachers, maybe both of those classes have 21, you get six new students in January, you can split those two students up into two classes and now you have two classes of 24. Now, this is an example, I don't want people saying, oh, this is exactly how it's going to look like, but it shows how when you have more teachers per grade level, more electives, it actually helps your problem of not overcrowding classes. And right now, that's an issue that we have in some of our buildings. We heard at the beginning of this year, a teacher talking about one of her elective classes having 41 students in it, mainly because that's a school, when we look at it, is not offering college and career at scale, or actually, career pathways at scale. I'm not sure about the college readiness pathways, but not as many electives for students to choose from. And so when students have to take an elective class, it becomes one of the options that students have to go to. And so this is a plan that we actually think will also help the teacher experience and also help us manage enrollment. So transition supports, this is something that has been a hot topic that we've been talking about in our schools, and we really want to ensure that we're providing transition supports, not only in the social emotional side, but also thinking about how we're welcoming students into new school communities, the navigation. You heard a lot tonight about the options, you know, whether it is a special needs student, whether it is a, a student whose school will be transitioning and offering into a welcoming environment. You hear this idea of what do we do, how do we navigate our options and our choices? And this is something that is top of mind for us. So should the recommendation be voted on, one of the things we know in the implementation phase that we would have to ensure that we're doing, continuing to listen to our, our partners, but really working with the community on understanding choice, understanding all the different nuances of the plan so that we can actually move forward. We also want to continue to really think about community in this, leveraging our partners to support us through this and also strengthening that collaboration and honoring legacy. One of the things we've also talked about, our transition teams, and I know that this has also been a hot topic lately, the academics team under Dr. Florence's leadership has already started working with principals as early as the summer to ensure that 100% of our schools. At that point, we didn't know what the recommendations were going to be. So the idea was really working with all of our schools to stand up transition teams that say, should a recommendation need to move forward, how are we supporting that school community? Now, there's a responsibility we have as district leadership to provide guidance on the academic model, to provide guidance on, you know, how enrollment, transportation will work. There are budgets, these are things that we already provide, but there are things that are close to the school community. Those, those routines, the traditions that are in schools, the activities, the partnerships, those are things that, you know, I should not be, you know, dictating, nor should people on the team, those are decisions that are close to the school community are important to the school community. And that's what the heart of these transition teams are. Transition teams are not decision-making authorities that, you know, replace the, you know, the district or our, or our principal or our chapter chair, but are making some of those local-based decisions to really support the school through the transition. And so more to come, I know that there's some, some questions about who's on the transition team. In some cases, in some schools, they're already up and running. In other cases, there's lots of questions about the transition team in terms of the roles and support. We want to provide more clarity for this, but the idea of this is really making sure that there are people in the school community navigating to help the school through change and transition. Staffing is another question that has come up, and this is our timeline. Should the recommendation be voted on by the board in December? One of the things that we are committed to doing is naming principals by the end of December as much as possible, and then by the end of January, naming assistant principals by that, end of that time, and also working with our, our Principals Association, our Administration Association to navigate those decisions. We know that the enrollment window is set to be open from January to February 27th. That's probably our enrollment choice window anyway, you know, outside of even the recommendation, because we would normally be doing enrollment and choice right now. So enrollment choice window will be from January 5th to February 27th. And at the end of that enrollment choice window, it allows us to determine the staffing in our building, so that we'll know the enrollment numbers, we can determine the budget and also complete teacher, the teacher hiring process by the end of April. Central office budgeting will also take place between January and spring to really ensure that central office budgets are taking place, and then also central office staffing will also take place in that timeline. Just a quick note on financial sustainability. So when Chief Stockdale presented our four-year forecast to the board in October, this was what the board charged us with. So the board charged myself, as well as Chief Stockdale, with finding $5 million of savings in this year, but at least $30 million it can carry year over year. And this was something that the board passed a resolution on, charged us with to find savings. And so that additional $30 million is the, is the minimum when we think about Building Brighter Futures savings. We know that there's more work to do, because if you look at fiscal year '29, there is in that bottom row, a negative deficit there, so there's even more work that we, we have to do there. But this is the charge that we did to actually get us through the next few years. And I want to share with you how Building Brighter Futures is supporting us towards that goal. So I believe, there were a couple of questions last week about where are some of the savings coming from and are there any money that we'll actually have to invest for this plan to take place? And so this is very high level of some of the early estimates that we are projecting through Building Brighter Futures. Just by doing the configuration, by the programmatic impacts, some of the, the investments we're doing in new programs, there is a savings of $36 million included in this recommendation package. So of all the 29 schools that we'll be recommending to end instruction at the end of this year, all of those moves, taking the, even the, the new programs we're bringing in, we would save $36 million. So that is showing how much we would save. When it comes to leases and utilities, that's a small amount of our, of our savings, but we would save about one to $2 million just in taking those buildings offline. We would save one to $2 million. There are some costs, though, we will have to put into this plan. So these are one-time temporary costs. I know our board chair asked the question, like what are those one-time temporary costs that will be added in? We know there's costs that come into securing the buildings to move, because when there are moves, this happens in any given year, we actually do the moving services. So I hope that people don't think that, like, teachers are doing moves. Now, of course, there are individual boxes, those, those type, well, actually, I think in some cases, some of the, the things can actually be packed and moved that we actually send to the new, the new building, but that's a cost that we incur. Records, and then also from staff separations in terms of any, you know, early separations that are included. I know that that went out to our bargaining unit members recently, as well as some of our school leaders. So these are the costs that we would actually have to eat up, but they're temporary costs. It's $7 million. And then no changes, actually, in student transportation, even with the transportation, to provide transportation for all of our students through Building Brighter Futures, we're projecting a level cost and no added cost. And at first, we thought we would actually have to pay more money for transportation, but we're not. And safety and security is another thing we're making cuts from. We are actually keeping that level so that we can increase safety and security in all of our buildings. After the added expenses of what we are going to save through Building Brighter Futures and the add-ons of what we will have to put in, right now, our early projections are $30 to $31 million. We're committed to continuing to share with the board more savings as we go along, and we may realize more savings should the, the board vote on this plan and there's more work that we're doing ahead. Finally, I just want to remind you of this chart. This is another chart we also shared, Chief Stockdale shared when presenting our four-year forecast, that just shows over time, the amount of savings we've been having. And if you're looking at that X-axis, thinking that that's like a balanced budget, that dotted line is the very, of what our budget looked like when I first came in as CEO, in terms of being very steep, we were going down, we were in fiscal precaution. We exited fiscal precaution by taking so many measures, when we think about cutting $200 million from central office, the calendar consolidation, reconfiguring our, our school-based budgets, passing the levy. Year over year, this chart has continued to move to a balanced budget. And what you see right now in the dark line with the diamonds in it, these are our early projections with Building Brighter Futures, and you can see we're almost getting to that balanced budget, but more work to do. This just shows what we've done over time to improve our, our finances. And as you can see on this chart, a $518 million improvement in our fiscal year '27, '28 balance. This is just a reminder to the public, but I know also our, our board has this, that for all information, we're putting it on our Building Brighter Futures landing page. I know we're in the process of doing a CMSD website refresh, to have a new website for our entire CMSD webpage. But Building Brighter Futures will actually be a icon, icon directly on that page where you can click on it, find all things Building Brighter Futures, as well as information about schools. So with that, that's the Building Brighter Futures portion.
Any questions? I don't see any lights on. I'm sorry, we don't allow public questions during the meeting, but we'll make sure that there's a way for you to connect with Dr. Morgan's team after the meeting. Thank you. Dr. Shreedar, do you have a question?
Yeah, not a question.
Why isn't your light on?
Say again?
Why isn't your light on?
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
All right, the rest, get on your lights.
Dr. Morgan, this is not a question, I'm just, I just want to appreciate the work that you've put into, and you and your team have put into providing us these answers. Thank you for being responsive and thank you for bringing the, the information to us in a way that is, is both understandable and is detailed. Thank you.
Dr. Morgan, I have a few questions. First, great to hear about the website, by the way. I know that's not the big topic of the day, but I, I am happy to hear that for our district and our school communities. A couple of things, you mentioned, you know, re-upping the Safe Passages Program, can you talk more about that? What is, like, share more about what it is, what happened to it, what the plan is to revamp?
Most definitely, yes. So we have safe passages or had safe passages, and we've been working with partners to do it. Had lost some funding that actually was outside funding that we were getting to actually support safe passages. And so right now, since I was funded by one of our foundation partners, and it's no longer being funded, we're working and committed to preserving that. I know we've been in talks with the, the city. Dr. Mosley's team has actually been working with a couple of other organizations, it may do it subsidized by another organization, but this was funding that we once had and don't have anymore. And it's a critical function when we think about the importance of getting students to and from our schools safely. Oh, and the other thing I would say about it, crossing guards, which some people will think about, safe passage is still a part of what we do have, and our crossing guards are supported through the city, they're financed through the city.
Great, thank you. And feel free to come back with any of these answers, but I do want to hear about how you and your team are thinking about special education as we make these decisions and potential changes. Bring that back?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then I know that, you know, you shared, go ahead.
One thing I did want to share on special education, there is a meeting that we already have planned to meet with families of special education, but I also heard a request about prior to. So just know that I'm tracking that, and then also we can come back and provide information that we're doing on special education as well.
Thank you. And then I had, you know, I know we're talking about almost all of our schools, if they are consolidated according to this recommendation, students going into either the same or a higher level rating of school, and, you know, that is important to me. I don't think that our students should have such, our families should have such high-stakes decisions when it comes to choosing a school. I'd love for all of our schools to be high-quality opportunities for our students, and frankly, in some of the situations, like, they are still not going to be yet, right? As, as much as we want them to, at least in that first year. How are you thinking about, and can you, I know you've talked about this a little before, but can you again reiterate how we will maintain and increase the ratings of our schools through the consolidation process?
Yeah, no, this is a, a great question. And there are questions we receive on both sides, because there are, there's the benefit of students going to, in some cases, a higher-rated school, and then there's some of those school communities that are saying, we worked so hard for our four-star, and now we're going to be having a new school community come in, how do we maintain that? And so that is on, on our radar. Gratefully for the work that we're doing through the board goals and guardrails in terms of monitoring our academic progress and the work that is taking place on Dr. Florence's team, there's just a lot of coherence and synergy on the academic model. I know many of you get a chance to see our board goals and guardrails, which tonight, I know we will be talking about chronic absenteeism, you get a chance to see when we're presenting that. Already, we were talking about our, our college readiness goal, and, you know, Dr. Florence's team was presenting that in one of our cabinet meetings, really just talking about the academic progress. And when we look at our current, how students are currently performing, there's a lot of work we have to do, but in many cases, students don't even have the shot because the courses aren't offered. And so when I think about the work that Dr. Florence's team is doing in terms of thinking about the rigor that is at scale in all of our classes, if students don't even have the rigorous opportunities to take advanced placement work or or to take enrichment opportunities and courses, we won't be able to get to that level. And so, the Building Brighter Futures is, provides the pathway, or as many people said, the promise for us doing the work, then we have to continue to just monitor and double down on all the strategies that we've been working on and been making some academic progress on already.
Thank you. And again, you can come back with this answer, but I would like to hear more about how you are thinking about the savings beyond what's currently projected, because as you said, there is more work to do. And I think it's important for the board to hear how you're contemplating achieving the rest of the savings. And I know that perhaps some of your projections currently are conservative, because I know you want to be careful and ensure that you've got all the data together. But if we can bring that back in the future, that would be great. Ms. Lebrun?
Thank you, Dr. Morgan, for answering the questions that you've been hearing within the community and from the board members. I really appreciate that as well. As we heard today during public comment, there are many concerns and questions surrounding special education. And Chair Ellicott already requested some additional information around that. But I was looking at the FAQs online, and it says that there's a plan to share information with families. I'm wondering, what can families expect to learn at these meetings that you're going to be having?
Great question. So, as is now, when it comes to special education, pre-K, and any specialized program, not every school, and this is what it is now, has seats available for that. So, if there are students with special accommodations or special things that are needed, we have to make sure that the facility needs meet, not only the facilities' needs, the staffing, the programming, all of that needs to meet, meet those opportunities. So, as is now, when families enter into our system, there's always, you know, a reviewing of that student's IEP. There's, you know, someone working with, from our special education department, working with that family to find out where the best options are. And so, that's how it currently is now. Of course, when we're thinking about the movement of students, we have to think about the recommendation for where schools will be, what the facilities will be, the staffing in those buildings, not only thinking about our teachers, but also paraprofessionals for these certain areas to know where the seats are. And so, we already knew that there were, our families with, students with special needs needed extra support in navigating those options and understanding that. And so, there's a commitment that our team already had, that, starting in December, and then doing some along the way, that there would be meetings to help families understand their choices, understand the option, understand why they attend a school now that has those options. But maybe in the new school, those, those classes can't fit there because of the space needs. Or in some cases, keeping pre-K in there so that we can move special education classes to other areas. It was just all about space needs. And so, those are all different things we want to work out. So, that's what's planned, should the board vote on the plan. I also heard a request about, maybe there are questions that family members have prior to. And so, that's something I'll be circling up with the team to see if that's something we could stand up beforehand. But we definitely, even, even if we do something beforehand, we're committed to having ongoing meetings, because families are going to have to understand their choices. And it is, it is a specialized case for each student, as is now. And we always really want to make sure families understand their options.
Dr. Morgan, I had another, oh, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Chair Ellicott. Dr. Morgan, thank you again for the presentation. It's, I do have a question kind of around communication with students. Just in my day-to-day life, I interact with young people in various capacities. And I don't think that I could ask the questions that they have necessarily, but some questions around students who are at current schools that will welcome in new students, if this vote goes forward. They have questions about, you know, how things will look for them as they apply for scholarships, as they move forward in their education. So, my question is, will the students have an opportunity to communicate and have questions answered directly from maybe their leadership in their building or other leaders within the district?
No, that's a great question. And of course, our scholars never will be shy in terms of asking the questions. I was at the Davis Digital Meeting last night, and there were students asking questions. They were asking about specific classes, they asked about their block schedule, you know, what could be offered. In some cases, there is a, I think there's a video gaming course that the digital side offers that now Davis students are like, "Oh, now we can offer that," but is that in a different pathway? So, they're already asking all the technical questions, and I love that, the students are asking those questions. I also had the opportunity, the weekend following, when I shared the recommendation, to attend a Minds Matter showcase, where many of our scholars were talking about their experience living on a college campus over the summer. And I took the opportunity to just ask the kids about the recommendation. And, you know, though there are students who have questions or concerns about the recommendation, most of the questions are forward-thinking. So, the number-one question I got was about their class rank, what's going to happen in their class rank should the schools merge. I heard questions around some of their programs, you know, like the white coat ceremonies, different things like that that we're committed to doing. When it comes to things like class sizes, not class sizes, class rank, when it comes to some of those specifics of the programming, our academics team is working on a loose-tight framework. And when we say loose-tight, that means what are the things that schools have under their control to allow students in the community to have say over versus what are those things the district has a position on? And I know academics has been working really closely on that. That's something we're providing for school communities. The other thing I'll say to your question about applying for colleges, none of that should, should change, you know, when thinking about the student's pathway. So, and for an example, for a student who attends Cleveland School of Science and Medicine, should this recommendation move forward where they are all on one campus, the science and medicine pathway is not going away. So, those students will still be in that pathway. And should be putting on their college application that they are a graduate of the science and medicine pathway, should they have earned the pathway? And that's something that's also a misconception now, not just on that campus, on many other campuses, that students aren't necessarily completing the pathway. So, we, we don't want them just in a school by name. We actually want them completing the pathway, finishing that seal, finishing, you know, with the college credits to have dual enrollment, or early college credits to go into college. So, these are the things we're going to continue to work on, and it'll expand now, because now all high schools will have those opportunities. Graduating with an honors diploma. Many of our high schools don't offer the coursework for students to actually graduate with an honors diploma. Building Brighter Futures enables that.
Thank you so, so much. I got one more kind of question. It is good to see from the, one of the last slides, with no changes on the safety and security as far as the budgeting. And I think about that from a student perspective. You know, a lot of times, that security staff, that safety staff in the building, the secretaries are a lot of times, that safe space for a lot of students. So, it's really good to see that. And I guess I kind of would ask, my, my thought process goes around, the schools just merging into another school with those staff people, are those staff people considered similar to teachers as, as they move from one school to another potentially?
And you're talking specifically for safety and security staff?
Yes.
Yep. Let me, actually, I want to come back to that in terms of what our, because I, every bargaining unit is different. And we do have, through our police and safety officers, they're under OPBA, and want to make sure I understand how that allocation happens or if that happens centrally. So, I'll come back to that. But I know one of the things we're committed to is continuity, which is why we, the larger recommendations are mergers and consolidations versus closures to ensure that as many students are possible are seeing familiar faces as they go to a new building. I'm just not sure what that means for safety and security. And that's a team I know we have to do a meeting with. And the same thing, which I appreciate the question that SEIU asked, because it's like every union's really different, and as, what are the staffing implications as we do this? So, I appreciate all those questions. And these are the, the things that people are writing in terms of the process over the promise.
Ms. Lebrun, followed by Dr. Sridhar.
I have a two-part question, Dr. Morgan. At the State of the Schools address, you made a call to action to community partners to step up particularly around the buildings, the usage of the buildings that will no longer be schools, right? I'm wondering, have community partners stepped up to that call to action? And in what ways do they plan on, you know, helping out with those spaces and continuing to serve the communities?
Yes, there are, of course, we're working really closely with the city, because in some cases, there are places, there are, there is land where our schools are built on that either the district may own or the city may own. So, there's usually processes in terms of really figuring out what is, how do we figure out the next steps with that? And so, we're working really closely with the city on that, getting the county now involved to meet, to talk about different opportunities. But I've also been hearing, I've been hearing from local churches and different community organizations that are interested in figuring out how they can best support and partner with the district. Oftentimes, people don't understand the undertakings of a building, particularly our buildings that are not in good building condition. So, it is not, you know, there's a lot of investment that goes into that. And so, I think it's both understanding for the community partners around how we can re-envision and reimagine a school, while at the same time also making sure it's realistic and what can happen. And I know that that's been one of the challenges that have happened in the past, as to why there are some buildings that were closed in a much earlier facilities plan, like in 2010, that is still standing. And I know this board voted in the spring to do some demolitions on some of those, to move forward with that. But that's why the intentionality we've been doing with the board and some other community partners are so important on the early end of it, so we don't have to wait, be 15 years down the road and still have empty buildings.
The second part to my question around community partners, I know that there are still partners that want to engage in some of the services that they provide at the schools. What will that look like? Or have you engaged, or will principals be the ones engaging with the community partners to figure out, okay, now that we have this many more students that qualify for these services or that could benefit from these services in the building, are they able to provide additional supports? Will the support still be provided to those that are at the, you know, the welcoming school? What will that look like?
Yeah. Partnerships are what makes schools and our district work. So, we are very fortunate for all of our partners. For those partners that are currently in, we're meeting with them to figure out the next iteration in terms of what that looks like should the board vote on the recommendation. But also, it's really important that as we think about partners, we think about sustainability. And we're just coming off of, I mean, all, many of us were here when we had to, when we lost ESSER funding. And we were spending almost a half a billion dollars to outsource our after-school programming and different things like that. And when that money goes away, we, we had to make the difficult decision for those programs to go away. And so, a big part of Building Brighter Futures, these are programs that the district can maintain and the district can provide, and work with outside partners. So, we do want to figure out from those outside partners, how can we come alongside of you? How can we work with you? And then also, we're interested in figuring out what partners or funding they may have to come alongside to work with our district. And so, we want to continue to keep those conversations going. If there are any partners that are out there listening and you're interested in thinking about, you know, supporting or helping, please feel free to reach out. We really want to figure out that path forward that is sustainable.
Dr. Sridhar, good job with the light.
Dr. Morgan, the, so, looking at the, at the staffing slide that you had a couple, you don't need to go back to the slide. I have a specific question about professional development for teachers, particularly at the high school level, as teachers are moving into schools that have these career technical education pathways, schools that, and even in school, even if the, if the teachers aren't moving from one school to another, if a school has a new pathway that didn't exist before, and this doesn't need to be an answer right now, if you could bring a plan for what kind of professional development will be available to teachers? If you have an answer, I'd certainly appreciate it now, but, you know, it would be good to, to actually hear about, what is the plan for that and how we will support teachers in those buildings?
Yeah. I'll come back with more specific on it. I can let you know what we're already knowing will need to be true. We're thinking about the expansion of programs such as AP and even in some cases, you know, if an IB program is moving to a school or, well, in all of our Montessori cases, the schools are just moving to a building. But any case where there's, needs to be training, we're already committed and working on getting the teacher's professional development on it. We know in the high school space, there needs to be professional development on college and career pathways, period, nonstop. We know that that's something we all, we have to do. And so, we're committed to that. Also, one of the things in working with our, our teachers' union, President Obrensky, we are also committed to providing a draft calendar early. And so, one of the things we may be looking at is, we know that there's a process that the board has to do to review a calendar. We may be bringing a draft calendar before the end of this calendar year, just for the community to look at, and then, of course, letting it sit for the time that we need to sit to get feedback on. But also, that will help for a couple of reasons. One, help people plan, and that's the same thing with starting in times. We know that's another question we've gotten about. We want to get that earlier to people. It helps them plan, it helps with staffing. But then also, it helps, we've, we already know that should this recommendation go through, there's going to be time that schools are going to need at the beginning of the year with their staffs and their school communities, building that community and also building partnership. And so, that's one way that we're also thinking about supporting.
Ms. Peak?
Yes, I wanted to just step back a moment to the schools that are closing or, and also that are maybe going to welcoming schools. Just some thoughts on how the community and partners can support preserving some of the legacy of those closing buildings. And then, perhaps they may also want to bring something, you know, with them to that, the welcoming school. So, are there some community conversations that are going to happen around how we can smoothly transition some of those things that they feel that is very personal to them?
That's a great question, and also something I can provide more information on. I know at a very high level, we've been talking about preserving legacy, and what does that look like? And I've gotten emails, you know, there, there are people that have sent emails about, you know, preserving the legacy not only in schools, but then also, maybe there's a building that now will have a recommendation of a name change, such as, I've gotten questions about Mary McLeod Bethune. Like, how, how are we thinking about honoring that legacy? And so, there's many different things that, you know, we're thinking of. But then also, when we think about the school communities, those are things that, you know, when school communities really come together, they can do many different things to help preserve those legacies and keep things moving forward. But also, I'm committed to sharing more information about it. And I just wanted to acknowledge for the public that, you know, we have been getting, you know, some of those questions that people have asked, and we thank you for raising those.
Dr. Morgan, I have a follow-up to Dr. Sridhar's question, actually. So, thinking about those programs or pathways, for example, IB potentially being moved to the John Hay Building and the professional development, do we anticipate any lag in actual implementation of some of these new pathways, especially when they are truly new to the building? Or is there going to be, you know, an anticipation of particular staff being able to carry that in? How are you thinking about that?
Yeah, so, one of the things that we're going to, we could come back to share more information about this. I know from talking with some school leaders and teachers, there's this question of, like, we know that there are more programs, but how does this work? And there, there are the group of kids that are, have currently chosen a school or pathway. They need to graduate in that pathway. And so, there's a bifurcated, I almost think, support process we have to have here for finishing students out in their current pathway versus what it may mean for bringing in a new freshman class that now has many opportunities to explore IB and, you know, all the college credit courses and the pathways. And there'll be an opportunity for expansion over time. But next year, there will be a certain amount of courses that we have, and it'll meet the requirement to help students finish out on the pathway for the cohorts or so that we'll have. We'll have a couple of cohorts that we need to finish through that, and then also build as we build along. But I'm committed to sharing a little bit more about what that looks like, because I know that those have been questions. And I appreciate those questions, because when people have those questions there, they're truly thinking about, okay, how do we move forward? How do we make this work? You know, your question was specifically around a lag. For students who are currently in their pathway, we don't intend for there to be a lag, where there may be a new program that's entered in. In that first year, we may not be able to offer that program for all students. It won't be just, okay, all students start over from scratch. You can now choose a pathway if you're a senior. Now, it won't be just... Now, it won't be like that. It's about finishing them out while building that along. But I can share more specifics in the coming weeks about that.
Okay. And in addition to that, the commitment is still for those schools that don't have pathways, that they would be able to have it that first year, though?
Yes. So the recommendation, on the day of the recommendation, there was a map that we shared. So the career pathways, those are those, where those will be next year. So that's the minimum of where we'll have. I know last night, there was a guidance counselor at a school that was talking about potentially an IT pathway, because they have a course in the IT pathway, and they were like, but we don't have it yet. So, well, you could build that over time, but we will have a pathway for students to complete for next year, and it can grow and build over time. And the same thing with college readiness. We have some schools that offer no college readiness courses. There will be college readiness courses in every high school.
Great, thank you. Ms. LeBrone?
This conversation made me think about, you know, we're talking about teacher credentialing and preparation for teaching these pathways and, you know, will the pathways be ready? But I'm also wondering, like, I know we had talked about having some information sheets about what pathways would be available at each of the schools. Will that be ready before school choice opens up, or is it already available?
We do have that information. I know that our team is working on a school finder tool that should the recommendation be voted on, that on our website, so this new refreshed website, which I've seen a beta process of it, it looks pretty awesome. But there'll be both the Building Brighter Futures landing page, where families can go and get more information, but also potentially the school finder navigator right there. The school finder navigator will not only help you find a school, it'll also let you know what programs are there, what programs are being built there. And so that is information that we'll have there. As we get more specific on the actual courses, that is something that we can probably be providing in the spring towards the fall. The reason why I say more specific is staffing needs to be determined at the building so that we can know exactly all the courses that will be offered there. And so we can't do that until we know the enrollment. And so there's still some of this that school leaders will be shaping as they're doing planning for the start of the 26, 27 school year.
Okay, thank you. And the students and families can still make changes to their choice if they learn that they wouldn't have access their first year to a particular pathway that they chose that school for?
Yes. Students can make choices, changes within the choice enrollment window. So that's, that timeline between January and February 27th, if they want priority in the choice portal. Of course, you can make a choice after that, and it may be based on what's available in terms of where the seats are, and that's how it currently is. So we really want families that should this recommendation be voted on by this board to make a choice as soon as possible in that January and February timeline, so we can determine the staffing in buildings, determine the courses, and then also determine the budgets and enrollment.
I'm sorry. There was talk about having these teams that would be intentional about making calls to all the families that are impacted by BBF. I'm curious, like, because the vote has to happen first, if the recommendations are approved by the board, we go right into the holiday break, does that mean that, like, this team is going to be in full force, making calls and connecting with families in January before school choice opens, and then during that process to make sure that they're well-informed?
Yes, some of that will happen right before the holidays, but really get kicked into gear in January. Also there, on the high school side, there will be a couple of career pathway fairs for our rising eighth graders. They'll take place in December. I think it's two, I'm looking back there. Yep, two that will take place in December that will also help students make choice. And then in January, there will be fairs for families, not only at the high school, but also at the elementary level to help make a choice. So those are things that, we can share more information about, like, that calendar at a very high level, we're planning to do. But yeah, the navigators who you're talking about, which is different from the transition teams that schools are putting in place, but there are these choice navigators that are really helping families navigate and understand their choices.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Dr. Morgan, and thank you for being responsive to questions and concerns you've heard from the community. And also, thank you to my board colleagues, because I am hearing you all ask things that we have heard out in the community and concerns that others have raised, and that is our job, right, to make sure that we are vetting as deliberately and fully as we can as we make this decision. All right, and we're not done yet. So the board will now hold its monthly monitoring of goals and guardrails, and Dr. Morgan, will you please present that presentation?
All right, thank you so much. So we are, tonight's goal and guardrail is focused on specifically on chronic absenteeism. But if you remember, this is a indicator that we've attached to Goal 1, which is our ELA goal, that focuses on third graders being proficient, and then also Goal 2, which is around Algebra I in our ninth grade team. We have several of our wonderful team members who lead our attendance work that are here with us this evening. So of course, Dr. Florence, Chief Academic Officer, Jose Gonzalez, Victoria Harris, who leads our attendance work, and then also Dr. Nick D'Amico. So very grateful for them, and they'll be chiming in as there are questions. So just a reminder, the goals, this is connected to both Goal 1 and Goal 2. Goal 1 is thinking about the percentage of third graders who are proficient in English language arts will increase from 35% in August of 2024 to 60% in August of 2030. And we're looking at chronic absenteeism, because if students don't show up, how can they be proficient? And so we know, historically, our district has struggled in chronic absenteeism, which is why this is a focus of ours. We want to decrease the percentage of K3 students identified as chronically absent from the baseline that we were at last school year, of 49% to no greater than 45.5, and that's in-year. So that's what we're looking at, to decrease it in-year. We're focusing on this grade band, because this is a grade band, one that struggled academically on the OST, third graders struggled on the OST last year, and also, this is a group that has also struggled with attendance as well. We also, Goal 2, is looking at the percentage of first-time test takers who are proficient in Algebra I will increase from 26% last year to 50% in 2030. And we're specifically looking at decreasing the percentage of ninth-grade students who are identified as chronically absent from a baseline of 71.2. That was how many ninth graders that were chronically absent last year, to no greater than 67.6, which 67.6 is still abysmal, but we have work to do. And so I just want to stop here in terms of these two grade bands that we've identified, because these are grade bands that have struggled. So we're going to talk globally about some of our attendance efforts. I know many people think about what we've been doing in attendance more broadly in the system, and the reason why we picked these groups, because these are the groups that struggle. And when you think about ninth graders, say, 71% of them were chronically absent last year, this is a rallying cry of work we have to do as a district and a community. Okay, so the first thing I want to just share is just our attendance rate. So attendance rate is looking at our average daily attendance and what that attendance rate is. And there's a celebration here globally. So right now, based on where we were last year at this time, we're up. We're actually up from where we were to, over the past couple of years. So when you think about some of the global things we've been doing to increase attendance, we're up. 82.8 still is not something to shout and scream about. We still have a lot of work to do there, but we are up. At the same time, chronic absenteeism is up. Now, chronic absenteeism is something we don't want to be up, we actually want it to be down. Now, you may be asking, how is that, how can that be true? How can you be both raising the attendance percentage, but then chronic absenteeism being up? A reminder that chronic absenteeism is defined as students who are missing 10% of the days available in that school year. So it's a moving target. You could be chronically absent now because you missed a good majority of October, and then if you come to school all throughout the rest of the year, well, if you missed a good majority, you may not be able to catch up. But let's say you missed, let's say you missed about seven days in October, you would be chronically absent right now. But if those are the only seven days you missed throughout the school year, you would not be chronically absent. And so I just want you to know that it's a moving target. I think to be chronically absent in an entire school year is about 18 days, give or take or so. So that is why the attendance rate can be up, because we can get more students that are coming to school on an average, on a daily basis, but chronic absenteeism being up. The other thing, as I move to this presentation, this is globally how we are across all of our grades. The grades we've picked, K3 and ninth grade, have struggled, and so I want to share that. All right, so let's look at our K through third grade, grade band. And if we look at the past couple of years, so this represents the three years I've been here as CEO, for this grade band, chronic absenteeism is up right now. We're at 43.71 for those students in K through 3, and it's up from where we were last year at this point in the school year. Based on our past data trends, we saw increases in chronic absenteeism that grow about 11.5% in a given school year. So if we continue on that pattern, right now, we would be off-track. Like, we can't be, we're currently up, and if we continue outpacing in terms of how many students are chronically absent, we will not catch up to our goal. Looking at our ninth graders, this is a bit of a, more of a flat line, but it is up from where it was last year. Last year, at this point, it was 56.39% of our ninth graders were chronically absent. And right now, we're at 58.08 of our ninth graders that are chronically absent at this point in the year, so we are up. And as you saw from our data, we continue to go up in ninth grade, almost up to 71 percentage points of students who are chronically absent. So if we continue on that path, we would also be off-track. We are off-track if we continue on that pathway. So there's, for both of these groups, these are groups we need to look at and figure out, what are we doing to slow down the rate and also understand some root causes? One thing I'll also share, as our team is starting to look at new measures, and we're realizing this, we were just talking about college readiness today, a lot of the information and the strategies we're doing are baseline. So we're looking at, we maybe look at historic trends, but the strategies may just be emerging starting this year. And so even in areas where we may be off-track, we may have different hypotheses of different things and different strategies we're going to need to do. And so we're learning through this goals and guardrails process that we even hope in the things that we're presenting, that we see with new strategies, these things to evolve over time. Because it's challenging us to realize, in some cases, where strategies are working and when, some cases where they're not. All right, so a deeper dive into our data. For both of our grade bands, in K3 and ninth grade, students with disabilities have higher chronic absenteeism. This is another correlation that we also see when we look at proficiency, that students with disabilities have lower proficiency rates than the general population. But for K3 and grade nine, students with disabilities are more likely to be chronically absent than students without disability. And you can see these numbers, in K3, 45.49, students with disabilities are chronically absent compared to 43.19, students without, and in ninth grade, 66.71, students with disability chronically absent compared to 56.53, students without disability. Now, on the contrary, for our English language learners, both students with disabilities and English language learners are groups of students who are less likely to be proficient when we look at ELA and math than they are their general counterparts. But something is happening for our English language learners and our system right now that we want to study a little bit more, particularly for these grade bands. Because for both K3 and also in ninth grade, our ELL students in these grade bands are actually lower, they have lower chronic absenteeism than their counterparts who are non-ELLs. So this is something for us to study and understand, to figure out some of the strategies. And it's also interesting to, we know English language learners are not always synonymous with, you know, students who may be in, from families from immigrant background or different things like that, it's not always synonymous with that. But it is interesting to see this rate also given some of the challenges we've had nationally, particularly for some students in this population. Ninth grade chronic absenteeism rates are much higher in High School 1 compared to High School 2. Our High School Network 1 would be our, more than likely, our comprehensive neighborhood high school, where more are our High School neighbor, High School Network 2 are schools like John Hay, Bard, Davis. And so just really thinking about the differences there, and it's almost a 20% difference between chronic absenteeism rates there. So some strategies for improvement. These are some things that I know our team has been working on globally, so these are not specifically targeted towards these grade bands, but there's been a targeted school tiering system. This is the first year that attendance has been under academics, and that was an intentional strategy last year when attendance rates were not, were down and chronic absenteeism was up last year. We had attendance in our culture department, which there was a reason why, it is a part of culture, but we knew that academics are where the principals are supervised. It's also where we do the work with teachers and students, and so we made an intentional choice to shift attendance under our academics team. And really, since the summer, there's been intentional planning around our attendance liaisons to think about how we tier students and what strategies we give based on those different tiers, based on last year's attendance rates. There's also been intentional training for secretaries and principals around how we're supporting data entry. We had some data entry issues last year that we found out mid-year that we had to clean up, that also impacted our attendance rate. And those, they've also been continuing to ensure that we have good, clean data that we're looking at. Student and family outreach, I know that this team did home visits even before the school year started. They were doing attendance visits based on students who were Tier 2 and Tier 3, and those things continue to go on. Removal of no-show students, we're going to talk a little bit more about that. Our no-show students are students who don't show up, but they stay on a roster. And believe it or not, we have a cohort of students like that, and if we're not actively moving them off our rosters in the way that we can, because there are steps and processes you take, we can't just move students off our roster. But we have to go through those processes to do that, that moves our attendance strategies in a strong way. Really working with the communications department on an attendance campaign, there's been some pros and cons with that, we'll talk through that as well. And then also just some of the motivational challenges of just understanding what we can do to incentivize attendance, how do we best promote positive attendance and also promote that healthy behavior? And then also realizing for the two groups that we talk about, K through 3, an attendance strategy is also a parent strategy. Kindergartners, there may be a couple, but most kindergartners are not, you know, getting themselves out of the door and getting to school. That is apparent. And so when we're thinking about the strategies that are going to move that group, it's really thinking about how are we supporting the families to get kids to school versus ninth graders? You could very well tell your ninth grader, okay, I'll see you when you go, you know, when you get in, and you think that they're off at school and they're doing something else. And so that may mean a different type of strategy. And so we realize we do need to have that dual approach in thinking about these two different groups. All right, so what's not working? Or what is working? We're going to start with what's working, and then we'll go into what's not working. So what is working is the removal of those no-show students. We had 561 no-show students so far this year that we could actually remove. There are some others that may still be lingering, but we can't just do to all the rules and processes you need to do to remove them. And 561, those seem small, adds up. So these students who don't show up every day, they just are no-shows, so they just are not showing up, and they pull down our attendance, particularly in our high schools. We're currently working on removing 364 overage students, and so I know that's something that we've been working on, and this, while removing those, and I think when we did this, I don't know if they've already been removed already, but I know when we started producing this, this was in October, but it's ongoing, that'll almost take us to about, almost 1,000 students that we've been able to remove through this no-show process. The increased strategic work that we've been doing with our attendance liaisons to really help with that, family assistance, the data entry, the phone calls home to families, working with our family support specialists that we have through Say Yes. I know by sitting on the board for Say Yes, we are tracking attendance at the Say Yes level that's happening in the schools, and that has been a strategic shift and focus of our team working directly with Say Yes. We also had some bright spots. So 15 K8 schools and 11 high schools have reduced their chronic absenteeism by six to seven percentage points already this year. 15 K8, 11 high schools. And we want to learn what's happening there. We want to find out what's working, what are the strategies, what can we replicate? What have we done? There are also 36 K8 schools in 22 high schools that are currently under, and what I mean by that, it says attendance goal, but they are currently, they have lower chronic absenteeism or meeting their chronic absenteeism target from where they should be. And so that's also a celebration, that's a good amount of schools that are moving in this trajectory. Now, on the converse, our schools that, who are struggling are really pulling down the rate, and then also for the two grade bands that we're looking at, both K3 and ninth grade, these are grade bands that are really pulling down our rate, that we need to focus on. But it reiterates why the board has picked this as a goal. So what's not working? So what's not working, um, the global strategies are working for some. It's more of a, I would say, a tier one approach. And there's more we have to study to understand about not only tier two and tier three, but these specific grade bands, about what is taking place. One of the things that Dr. Florence shared, even for those schools that there are celebrations where they reduce these numbers, when you look at the particular grade bands in the K three and ninth grade, they're struggling with that as well. So it reinforces why the board, uh, charged us with looking at these grade bands, and there's work we have to do. Uh, our attendance campaign has been helpful. I know, uh, we started off the, the September with attendance, and a lot of people saw that. Uh, but there's more work we could be doing to be more strategic with that. We've had a longstanding partnership with the Browns, and we're grateful for that. But there are questions around like, oh, a Browns player shows up to your school, how do we actually get that incentive? We just had Darius Garland, uh, of the Cleveland Cavaliers at Rhodes, which was great. Uh, and, uh, thank you, Victoria, your team, and, uh, people from Chief Farmer Cole's team, uh, to, they really got that, uh, together. But I remember whispering to the principals, I said, what's your, what's your attendance rate? And they were both like, uh, seventy, eighty? And I'm glad, Darius, hey, come on out where you want to. And I, I, I want us to be charging that if we're gonna have someone like yourself in one of our schools, that we wanna raise the bar a little bit. And so we need to be more strategic in some of these efforts and really figuring out how do we incentivize this to our effort and the work that we're doing. There's also still some, uh, a lack of understanding in chronic absenteeism, the rules, their hours versus days. Um, one of the challenges in high schools, and I know this being a former high school principal, uh, when students miss a period sometimes, they already automatically get a half a day. They're a half a day. So a lot of our kids are, are tardy. I know many of you may be driving down the street at ten AM one day, and you still see a kid walking with their backpack. And you're like, shouldn't they be in school? Well, they show up, even if they show up on that day, they're not getting credit for that full day. And if you keep getting all those half-day attendances, that is also going to contribute to this. So this is work we have to do to understand it a lot more, particularly in our high school space. Um, and then even though all the work, the, the work we've been doing with family support specialists have been showing that there's been more intentionality, we can also tighten up in terms of the types of data that we're using. I know Say Yes is tracking, uh, we just saw some data in our last meeting where they're tracking some of the reasons why students who are missing are missing, and it varies, you know? It could be family issues, it could be mental health issues, many different things. And understanding that and making sure we're being more strategic in the intervention levels and support. So next steps we have here, I know that, um, there's a specific focus really on an attendance task force to study these issues, particularly for these grade bands. We need to have the global strategies that are helping all of our systems, uh, all of our students across our system. But if we're gonna move this metric for these grade bands, uh, we have work to do here. And then also, if they're not showing up, we, we can't get them to be proficient. This, this ties directly with goal one and goal two, um, of ELA and math proficiency. Also, the student and family outreach, we talked about that, uh, intentional collaboration with Say Yes specifically in these grade bands. And also thinking about how do we mitigate the barriers. We've talked about being more strategic in our attendance campaign, the tardiness focus, particularly in ninth grade, um, strategies we could be doing. And then also studying what's happening in our ELL subgroup, uh, because there is some positive momentum there in understanding, um, what's taking place there that we can replicate. And I would add here, and I know the team has talked about this, really understanding what is taking place at those schools that have, um, are either exceeding their AAP target and/or are below their chronic absenteeism rate from last year. And with that, uh, well, uh, team members, are there any other things that you would add or, um, uh, share to it before we get any questions?
Dr. Shridar?
Thank you, Dr. Morgan. The, uh, so this is, this is, uh, really just, uh, a connection between this, uh, work and the, and the discussion we had, um, earlier, uh, with Building Better Futures. There was mention about, um, a special discussion about SPED. In, in that discussion about special education, um, it would be meaningful for the board to hear, um, something specifically addressed about chronic absenteeism, especially with your, um, observation that students with disabilities, um, have a higher rate of absenteeism. You know, are, are there things that we could be doing better as we are working with that population of students that have, uh, needs that are different from other, other students, um, that would encourage them to be in school better? So that, that's something that I would like to see as well.
Ms. LeBron?
I'm, you know, I appreciate the context that historically we've, we've struggled as a district with chronic absenteeism, and, um, I think that's important to acknowledge, um, and that we're doing something about it with the goals and guardrails. I'm curious, given the current climate around, and I'm thinking of this like for next steps, I don't expect you to have data on this yet, but, um, around the current climate, um, with immigration, if we see an uptick in students or families choosing not to send their, their kids to school out of fear, um, for, you know, practices, you know, in their neighborhood or on their way to school, um, I'm just curious about that particular population.
Yeah, we can follow up with that. And like I said, ELLs are not always synonymous with our immigrant communities, but for our English language learners, actually attendance is, uh, chronic absenteeism is down. So, uh, uh, there's evidence showing that that rate is slowing down, and we just need to study it. And like I said, it doesn't have to be that all ELL students are directly impacted in that group, but it's something for us to study. I do know qualitatively, um, particularly at the top of this year, not the academic year, but like in January twenty twenty-five, when a lot of, um, either executive orders or different mandates were coming out, we did hear from families who were concerned. There was guidance that we provided, uh, to schools to think about the support for that. And, um, fortunately, we've had very supportive community, school leaders that have been really helping, um, to ensure those safe environments in our schools. Um, and we haven't had any major issues in that, uh, regard. But I'll follow up to see what we can find out, um, from that. But for our English language learners, uh, chronic absenteeism is down.
Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, Chair Alakad. Dr. Morgan, I, I just wanna make sure that, um, chronic absenteeism is fully understood for, uh, understood for myself. Uh, when we look at, um, ten percent, um, or more of their scheduled school days for any reason. First of all, thank you for adding the glossary of times, that was very helpful for me. Uh, but I just wanna fully understand, my mind automatically kinda goes to days, right? So when you look at ten percent, am I accurate in, in thinking about that as being like maybe one day in a two-week time period?
We, we've talked about this because, yeah, I, I, I know when I was a school leader and we were doing our tenant strategy, we had to break it down in days, because it's hard to tell a family member that says, you know, you've missed ten percent of the days. They're like, well, what does that mean? I don't understand, how do I change that? Uh, and so one of the things we've talked about in terms of thinking about this, making whether through a, uh, campaigns and different efforts, we, we translate that into days. I don't know how many days we've been in school so far, um, but, you know, uh, we're, we're about halfway through the school year. So let's say we're at ninety, we're more than ninety days, uh, yeah. Let, let's say we're at ninety days, uh, you know? Uh, you know, ten percent of that will be nine days. Uh, and so, um, that will be, you know, students who have missed nine days would be, or more, will be chronically absent. And so really just understanding that and for families to understand what they can do to turn that around. We also have lots of families in this, we see this in the younger grades, that we see spotty attendance. So there are patterns that after a weekend, parent doesn't show, uh, you know, doesn't bring the kid to school on Mondays, and they may not show up on Fridays, but they come for three days out of the week. And maybe in their family's mind, they're like, I'm sending my kid to school every week, but you're missing every Monday and every Friday. Or you're missing at least one day out of the week. That after time, and especially with many, as many weeks as we've been in school already, that's gonna put you off track. You're gonna be chronically absent. And so, uh, just really thinking about that. The good news is, we are not at the point, well, and we do have some people that have missed more than eighteen days. And, you know, we, we have strategies for those families and how you can turn that around. But we are not, uh, we are still at a point that if there are students who are chronically absent now, maybe right at the baseline of being chronically absent, you could turn that around, and it doesn't mean you have to forever be chronically absent. And so we, we're, I know we're looking at strategies of how to get those kids that are right on the cusp. They're probably like our, our tier two, those yellow students. How can we get, get them to turn it around and maybe move them to a category where they aren't chronically absent? And then there are those strategies, like for the kids that really are really struggling, um, and, uh, really thinking about how to best have those environments. It could be, uh, and this is, you know, Dr. Shridar, I appreciate your question around not only just special education, but it could be, uh, maybe that family chose a school that's really far. And, um, we need to just talk about, hey, is there a better choice for you, given where you work or your different environments? Uh, there's, could be many different atmospheres that we can look at. Sometimes it's a socio-emotional, uh, issue that's taking place, a kid not feeling safe. And just understanding what those are so we can deploy the strategy and help, uh, uh, us turn it around.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I, I think that that communication is so important to, for some families, uh, with that circumstances. I got another question, though. Uh, as far as when we are looking at chronic absenteeism, would I be accurate in thinking that if a student has a doctor's appointment or need to leave early for some appointment, maybe they have a court hearing, a juvenile court, would that missed time contribute to, potentially to them being chronically absent?
Hello, hello, I can respond to that question. Um, chronic absenteeism is defined as missing school for any reason. So that is your excuse, your unexcuse, your suspensions, so it's for any reason.
And you said suspensions as well?
Suspensions count towards chronic absenteeism.
Yeah, and thank you for that, um, note, Ms. Harris, because I remember being a school leader, and I'm sure you guys get this, parents are like, well, I called in, it's excused. It still is an absence, an absence is an absence. So even if it's excused, an absence is an absence. And so, um, that, yeah, that goes for all, all of the above. Of course, we want, excuse helps the school understand that that kid isn't coming and we can plan ahead, it's not unexcused. But it, it doesn't not, not count towards chronic absenteeism.
I'm sorry, I just wanna clarify, even though they would be classified as chronically absent, absent with an excuse, they would not be identified as a truant, which is a, is a different classification.
Okay, I got one more question around this. I'm sorry, I, I'm just trying to make sure that I'm very clear. For students who are, let's say, in high school, um, who change classes, a student could potentially come to school every day, but if a student is missing a particular class regularly, that could also contribute to chronic absenteeism?
Yep, if you're marked absent for, I, I think it's just one period, it's a, it's a half day.
Anytime a student is out of the seat, um, those minutes, hours count towards their chronic absenteeism, especially in high school where our students move period by period. So every time, uh, um, a student is not in seat, the teacher must mark them absent, and that counts towards their chronic or habitual truancy hours.
Yeah, and it takes a lot of management for it, particularly in high schools. I remember being the high school leader, sometimes you have kids that are cutting, but then you also have the kids that are in the guidance counselor's office, or they're like, I'm gonna go see about this. And if the teacher takes that attendance in the first five minutes, and you come back, and teachers are busy, they're up teaching and doing that, and if they don't correct their record, that, that becomes an issue. And so even thinking about those systems for school leaders to capture, is the kid down in the guidance counselor office? Are they doing something else? Are they, you know, helping somebody else out? How can we capture that attendance so it doesn't get away from us? And in a big, uh, in a, in a high school, you know, you know, all of our high schools, is just too many students in too many moving places? That if you don't have strong systems in place to capture it, it'll get away from you.
Mr. Briggs?
Uh, yes, I, uh, have a question having to do with averages. Let's say in year one, um, the, you have fifty percent chronic absenteeism, and the average number of days absent is like forty, um, district-wide. Year two, you have the same percentage, uh, fifty percent chronic absenteeism, but the average number of hours is thirty. So that's, that's a big improvement. Uh, do we measure that? And conversely, uh, if the reverse is true, you have fifty percent and the average hours go from thirty to forty, uh, that's a negative thing.
Yeah, and, um, yeah, I'll, I'll turn it over to Dr. D'Amico. I wanna say, Mr. Briggs, as you were starting, I felt like I was starting out as a word problem, you know? And I immediately thought, I said, okay, Dr. D'Amico.
Chronic absenteeism is a student measure. So you're counting individual students and categorizing them as chronically absent or not chronically absent. So in your example, none of that is really being recorded. So if you had a student who is being chronically absent, but they had actually improved their attendance compared to previous years, they're still chronically absent. And similarly, if you had a student who has missed more than eighteen days and they keep, keep missing, they'll only be counted as chronically absent one time. So in terms of this overall measure, it's, each kid is only gonna count once, no matter how much better or worse they are across that threshold.
So you, you don't measure overall chronic absenteeism, uh, as far as the number of hours of students?
No, that would be more like the attendance rate measure, because the attendance rate truly is like total time in school divided by, um, total possible time students should have been in school. That would be more along the lines of what you're, you're looking at.
Okay, so you do measure that?
Yeah, it's just, it, that would be the attendance rate, but that's not what we're held accountable by the, the state report card.
Okay, thank you.
Pastor Jones?
Thank you to our chair and to our CEO and to your staff. I guess my question is, uh, twofold. That is, um, under this slide, which speaks about student and family outreach. What kind of ongoing, uh, connection do we have with families, with concerns about, uh, the family, uh, home as relates to a child? And then the second part was, um, as relates to, um, proactive planning campaign, to, um, what type of aggressive measures do we take to have proactive, uh, uh, lack of absence that we, uh, put on the front end of everything we do?
I'll start with the first question that you asked. So we have family support specialists supporting every single building, and our attendance liaisons go out to the buildings and meet with them. But that is the group who is calling families every single day to find out what supports they need, why students are not in school. And so they then direct families to specific resources in the community that they may need to address the issues that they, uh, that families may have. So they are calling on a consistent, on a daily basis, they're calling families to see why students are in school, aren't in school, and then directing them to specific resources. What we have not done is to continue to analyze that data, to get to root causes, and to be able to really speak to and address those root causes instead of the ongoing issues that we see on a frequent basis.
Also, for our tier three students that are marked currently as chronically absent, once they are not being able to be reached by a phone call, the, uh, attendance liaisons and the family support specialists do home visits on a weekly basis to address those needs and to see what are some of the barriers that they also can break in order for children to come to school.
Mr. Phillips, do you have another question?
Yes, uh, I, one, one last question. Uh, kinda around students, um, who could potentially, um, have an IEP. And I, just kinda help me understand, um, is there a, a time requirement for, or an attendance requirement for students who potentially could get an IEP? And if so, are there, um, any supports that could be given? I think, it, in my experience, kinda, there's been students that, um, that concern could be for, but, um, there's challenges there. So is there any supports for students that maybe need an IEP but is chronically absent? If that question makes sense?
It does, if I'm tracking it, it would be students who are chronically absent but could be, could be identified as a student that needs IEP. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
I'll begin to answer that, then I don't know if, uh, there, there are questions that you have here. In any given school, um, particularly at the elementary, uh, level, there may be many different challenges. Chronic absenteeism may be one of them, maybe academics, uh, maybe, uh, another one. And usually, there's a, a team at that school that says, hey, let's figure out how we support that, that kid. And one of those recommendations may come up to say, you know what? We're realizing, uh, between a connection with the students, um, not coming to school, they're not coming to school because they're, they're, they're struggling academically, they feel out of place, they're not getting the support that they need. That may be the genesis of, of, of how IEP gets started. And a lot of times, especially in our elementary grades, that's how it gets started. Just by, you know, a cross-functional team, really looking at a lot of the challenges that a student may have, and that's how that can, uh, happen. Is, is there anything else you would add there, or?
Thank you for that. And I, I think the basis of my question was kind of around, um, are students missing out on the opportunity to get an IEP because they're chronically absent? I, I think that that was kind of the basis of the point that I was getting at.
So part of, each, each one of our schools has a student support team that looks at students that are, that could have a potential disability. And one of the things that we are required by law is to address the attendance before we even consider a disability. So in order for us to then begin the process of thinking through as a, a student support team, we have to look at the student's attendance, what are some of the barriers for them coming to school? And then at that point, once those barriers are broken, then we can then say, as a school team, this may be a potential disability. Let's move on for testing if the team, um, requires that.
We have to be able to show that they are not getting behind because of attendance as opposed to is it a disability? And so the team has to be able to differentiate. Are they not improving because they're just not here enough to receive instruction, or is it a true disability?
All right, thank you, Dr. Morgan, for this goal monitoring presentation. I want to just reiterate what I said in my opening remarks. This is an exact demonstration of what our primary business is, which is educating students, improving student outcomes. And I'm glad to see that the monitoring is working. Obviously, it was quite jarring to see those numbers, and even worse yet, to see the projected numbers. However, if we weren't monitoring it in this way, we wouldn't have the opportunity to hear from the team about the strategies that are working but are not working, but also that will be implemented in order to ensure that we can improve our student outcomes towards our goals. So thank you. All right, I don't see any other comments. Is there any old business? Any new business? All right, the next regular board meeting will be a board work session on Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. at Arnold Pinkney East Professional Center. The chair will now entertain a motion that the board enter into executive session for the purpose of considering the appointment and employment of public employees and officials, preparing for negotiations with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment, conferring with attorneys concerning disputes involving the Board of Education that are the subject of pending or imminent court action, and considering details relative to the security arrangements and emergency response protocols for the board and school district.
So moved.
Second?
Thank you, Mr. Stockdale, please call the roll.
Ms. Ellicott?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Briggs?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Pastor Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lebron?
Yes.
Ms. Peake?
Yes.
Dr. Sridhar?
Yes.
Ms. Welchow?
Yes.
Motion passes with nine votes.
Thank you. The board will now move into executive session. Following executive session, the board will return to this room to briefly, without conducting any further business. And thank you to everyone who is still with us.